One more note, Brenda had to go to the house to get something, so she'll be back.
She'll be back, okay.
But she said move forward, so we'll start with Emily.
We'll go ahead and start while she's out.
Hello, good afternoon.
Yeah, hello.
Point this down a little bit, because I'm short. Excuse me for the nasally sound, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold, so just bear with me if there's the nasally sound. So now we're going to switch to staffing requests for next fiscal year, the new fiscal year. Keeping in mind all the projects that we, the CIP projects list, keep that fresh in your mind, because these staffing requests are very much in relation to that and connected. I know it seems like a lot of staffing requests, I'm sure you've had a chance to review it a little bit, and so it seems like a lot, but we're going to break it down, we've met as a team, and really assessed it, and we really feel like these requests are necessities. Let's skip to the next slide. So just a little bit of an introduction. Again, assessing wants versus needs, you know, you kind of look at what's a want, what's a need for these staffing requests, and again, we feel like these are necessities, and we'll go through those reasonings coming up. Keep in mind staff burnout. One of the things with this is definitely a topic of discussion, I see staff working really hard, day in and day out, and they are working up to their capacity. It's very much a balance of the services and projects that we are involved in, and having the staff to do that and complete those. Level of service, so with that, we have a very high level of service standard for ourselves when it comes to town operations and services. We operate very much larger than we really are, and so to meet the needs of the town, we need the staff to do that and accomplish those goals. Keep in mind, the ultimate goal really is to serve the citizens of Waxaw to the best of our ability, and that's why we come to work every day and work so hard, and do what we do, and we're just requesting the staff to be able to accomplish those goals. You'll hear from each department, as they can speak to their request the best, and you'll hear from numerous justifications on these, from safety to meeting the service needs, to requesting more staff to make up in the gap of some of our understaffed departments. Again, we met as a team, and we feel these are all very legitimate requests, and just very appreciative of your consideration as we go through these. Like Richard said, we are going to skip ahead to police first and go a little out of order, so I will invite chief up here to speak to the police department.
Thank you. All right, buckle your seatbelts. So last year, during the retreat, we went over our staffing needs, same thing I'm going to do this year. We had to, I took that same approach as we did last year, I did a five-year plan last year, to try to get us to the comparable numbers where we needed to be with police officer versus population of citizens. So we continued on this year, but we had to do some adjustments, because last year we got two part-time officers and didn't get any full-time. So last year I'd asked for a captain, a lieutenant, and two patrol, and then two part-time community. So this year, we're continuing on with that. So currently, we have one patrol officer per 1,083 citizens, that's patrol officers. Now, the whole PD, or as a whole, is one police officer versus 701 citizen per employee. That includes admin staff, that includes detectives, narcotics, SROs, community police, that includes everybody. So when you look at the average for the towns with a population of 25,000 to 50,000 people, we're way off. So we were growing at an average of 849 citizens per year, when they were still building out Millbridge and Lawson in the prior years. With the, with what is approved currently coming up, the 4,800 homes, they're predicting at least 1,200 citizens per year, population going up. So if you look at that, I use way higher numbers because of our call volume, because of our types of call, because of the time that we spend on calls. Most of the US goes by one officer per 500 citizens. I use one officer per 700 citizens, because what that does, that takes in consideration of how long these officers are taking to get to get to the calls, how long they're spending on these calls, and the quality of service that the citizens are getting. So currently, staffing comparisons with eight towns similar to the population, you can see in red, that's us, 23,837, 12.83 square miles, we have 34 total PD staff, 22 patrol officers, so that's where we got our 701, and our 1,083 patrol officers, or excuse me, citizens per patrol officer. National average is 488 for total staff, and 588 for patrol officer per population. Calls for service in 2023, 28,518, 2024 calls for service was 35,324. That includes business checks, that includes foot patrols, that includes all your proactive traffic stops, like I say, visiting businesses, visiting neighborhoods, visiting parks, whatever they're doing, that goes in as a call for service. But you can see, we went from 28,518 to 35,324 in that year, so quite a bit more proactive policing, as well as calls for service. And a call for service may not be a crime that has occurred, it could be anything from a barking dog to a suspicious person, but it still takes manpower, it still takes man-hours to get out there and investigate each call. Our goal in the next five years is, while benefiting from low crime, reduce the number of citizens per officer and per staff member by at least 30% in each category. So current staffing... Yeah, cut that off, and... So the current staffing, you can see where we're at, and then fiscal year 2026 is where we're going. So we're asking for one patrol captain, one detective lieutenant, and four patrol. The reasoning for the patrol captain, I've got a deputy chief that currently supervises four lieutenants and two sergeants, and attempts to do his job as well. My fear is they're not being properly supervised by the deputy chief, because he's torn in so many different directions, he can't do everything. He's been doing it now for two years, because I asked for the captain last year, but we didn't get that position, so that was another year that he had to put into supervising all those lieutenants, and it's tough, you know, when he's not there all the time. The detective lieutenant, we used to have, I used to be the lieutenant over the detectives, over criminal investigations and narcotics. Well, the prior chief, prior to me coming, decided that position would be better suited to go into community policing lieutenant. I'm not knocking him, I'm not saying that that was a bad idea, because it was a really great idea, because he's able to go to all the meetings, all the WBA meetings, all the downtown business meetings, he visits the business on a regular basis, he goes to all the events, he's able to do everything. On top of, he supervises all of our school resource officers, all of our reserve officers, our part-time officers, and our community officers. So that position was needed, but the lieutenant over detectives is also a needed position. So I've got two sergeants that work in detective, one in criminal side, one in narcotics. Their immediate supervisor right now is the deputy chief, so he's just, he's not able to spread himself in all those different directions, it's just too much. And the four patrol officers that we're asking for, of course, that's trying to bring those numbers down, trying to bring our call volume in a perspective where they can respond to calls at a minimum time. So as we keep growing, and 1,200 citizens per year, we're going to continue to go backwards. So we've got to start putting some personnel in place to get those numbers reversed, so we can better assist our citizens in the town. So I've done this through fiscal year '26, '27, '28, and '29, and you can see, each year, I'm asking for personnel, so it'd be two patrol, one training sergeant, two community for '27, '28 would be three patrol, two patrol sergeants, '29 would be three patrol, one narcotics, and one criminal detective. That would be a total of 21 staff over that four-year period of time, and you can see the reduction in percentages on that bottom side there, it's quite a big reduction in overall. So we go from 1,083 down to 734, which is about in line where I believe it needs to be, based on call volume and times we spend there. Estimated allocation costs, this is where it hurts my heart, because it's a lot of money. So you're talking this year, two community... Sorry, I missed one. There we go. New captain salary, 117 benefits, that comes to 141. Lieutenant, patrol, you guys can read. Vehicles and equipment, so I'm saving this year $460,000 by buying back vehicles, but I'm asking for $360,000 to buy six new vehicles for six personnel, if we get those personnel. Uniforms and equipment, $44,000, total startup cost will be $932,901, ongoing costs will be $528,901,85. But out of that total startup cost, $400,000 can come off of that this year, because we're saving that much money by buying cars back. And I'll show you in the slides, in the next coming slides, where we're going to save money the next coming years as well, by buying back those vehicles as well, to try to fund this. '26, '27, '28, '29. All right, so we've got eight vehicles being replaced under Enterprise in the budget year, or this budget year, those are coming from '20 and '21. So we're buying back those, in a future slide it will show, it's $40,000 some odd dollars. And then eight vehicles will be replaced the next year, which we'll buy those back as well, which would be another cost saving, because that's another $45,000, I think it is. And then seven vehicles, then four vehicles. We will start to have to replace the '20 and '21 vehicles, we'll start to have to replace those by the time we get to those four vehicles that we're buying back at the end. So there will be a revolving cost for vehicles in the future that will cost more money, but as for now, we'll be able to make it. So buyback eight vehicles from Enterprise, it's $41,564, cost savings of $438,000. If six positions are allotted, then six new vehicles would need to be purchased for $360,000 for vehicles and equipment. And then same with '26, '27, and then each year after that, you'd have to assess the mileage for the budget year, and see what you can buy back, and see what isn't fit to be on the road. Those are the vehicles we currently have, the ones on the left, '25, '26, as you can see, all of them are under 60,000 miles, and these vehicles have these miles on them, because when they came from Enterprise, it took them a while to get the vehicles in, well then they went to Dana Safety Supply to be outfitted, with the radios, the lights, the sirens, the decals, all that kind of stuff. They sat on that lot for around a year, is what it was taking us to get those vehicles in. So a lot of these vehicles wouldn't even, they wouldn't need to be bought back until later this year, but it'd all be prior to June of 2027, when they'll come off that Any questions?
Well, I guess if you're buying the vehicles, you'll know the maintenance schedule, because when you're buying them from Enterprise, you don't know what they did to them. And then you're maintaining them, and then in the end, you can sell them to recoup.
So, and we, when we purchase vehicles, even the Enterprise vehicles, we do the oil changes, so public services, we take them down there, every 5,000 miles, they change the oil, and do all the maintenance on those vehicles when maintenance comes due. So when we, when we purchase those vehicles back from Enterprise, they'll continue to service those vehicles, at the end of the life of that vehicle, then we can sell those vehicles off. So I was surprised to see what the buyback price was on these vehicles, because it's very low. But when you realize the price we paid for these vehicles, we were paying an extra $9,000 to $11,000 per vehicle with contract prices, with their fees, everything that they charged us, ended up being $9,000 to $11,000 over state bid price. So we've paid for these vehicles over and over already, and now we get to pay another $3,000 to $10,000 per vehicle to get them back. But do I think it's worthwhile? Absolutely. Even if you bought a vehicle back and it had some issues, with 40,000 miles on a pickup truck, or a Ford Explorer, you could essentially still sell that vehicle between $10,000, $15,000, $20,000. So we're still going to come out ahead, if we buy them back, and we have issues, and we want to sell them on gov deals, we're still coming out on the positive side.
And what was the reason for the increase in calls for service, do you think? Because it seemed like quite a jump, you know, out of proportion to the growth in population.
Right, so, A, it's a lot of proactive calls, so when I took over a year and a half ago, I harped proactive policing. So I want them out here working, all I ask for is honest work. So when you come to work, I don't want people sitting in parking lots, you know, watching YouTube, watching TikTok, that's not what we're here for, we're here to serve the citizens. So a lot of that is going to be your proactive policing, not reactive. Now, the reactive policing did go up in the last year, the last five years, it's gone up every year, but the more citizens you have, the more calls for service you're going to have. So it's just the facts of life.
I will say that I do appreciate that you've crunched the numbers yourself, and not just taking the 500 number and using it as an absolute standard.
Thank you.
Just to echo Commissioner Don's sentiment, I think this is a very analytical approach to what you're asking for, so it becomes very difficult to say, no, that don't make sense, because you've made it make sense, so thank you.
Right, and I know money doesn't grow on trees, I know that we're restricted by budgets, I get it, I'm just trying to get us out of a hole, and put us back on track to get us where we need to be in the future, when there's another chief of police in this place, and I've left it in a better place than what I got it, so.
I guess the other question would be, I know police departments have problems with retention, and they leave for various reasons, and it takes about a year, right, to get somebody between the academy...
It does.
...field training, and then on their own. How long do you think, do you have people, if, for whoever you get, right, because I would imagine if you get a captain and lieutenant, those are going to be promoted up...
Yes.
...and then you have to get new people.
So here's what we're doing currently. Today, I've got Lieutenant Walmak, he is in Brunswick, North Carolina, at Brunswick College. We're going to all the colleges around military bases, all over North Carolina, to try to recruit people. The problem is, for Waxaw, once again, I understand budgets, but we start at $49,000. The Union County Sheriff's Office, come March, will start at $57,000. They offer retirement insurance, they offer great benefits, where are you going to go? Are you going to go to Waxaw, your local, or are you going to go to Union County Sheriff's Office? That's where they're going to go. So we are spreading out, trying to go to the military installations, these people are willing to relocate, they've just gotten out of the military, they know they want to be police, but they just don't know where. So we're trying to spread out and use other options to try to recruit.
Do you foresee the need to come back at some point, asking for a large pay increase to maintain the force?
I see the need now, but once again, I know there are budgets. I understand, I get it. I don't think I'm going to lose anybody from my department, I could be wrong, but I think for the most part, everybody there is happy, you know, and are they going to leave for a couple thousand dollars? I don't think so, they'd be crazy if they did, because eventually, you know, we'll catch back up to county, and they'll be happy. I've always looked at it as, even when I left the Union County Sheriff's Office to come to Waxaw, I didn't leave the Union County Sheriff's Office because I wasn't happy, I left because I was worried, I was getting ready to make sergeant, and I started looking, you know, at positions, I was like, well, if I get to captain, or if I'm lucky enough to make the chief deputy, a new sheriff comes in, I'm gone. So, and that would be at the end of my career, so that's when I started looking at police, and I was like, that's probably the way to go, you know, I don't want to get axed a year or two before I could retire, because a new sheriff came into town. So I think these guys are pretty happy here, but we are going to have to look at doing a pay study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
You spoke about retirement benefits at the county office?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to cover that, I think, tomorrow.
Okay, then I won't ask, I'll wait.
Anything else? Well, thank you so much, and I'm not going to cough on anybody else, I'm going to go home, and I'll see you tomorrow.
Get well soon, please. Don't touch it, Emily, don't touch it!
All right, so we'll get back on track with our, the order that we were going to go in, let me get back to, we're going to hear from planning and engineering next, and we combine these two for a reason, and they will go into that as soon as I get back to the slides. All right, here we go.
Cool. Yep. Good afternoon. I am before you to discuss filling a vacancy, and then also the consolidation of two positions. So in coordination with engineering, more specifically Orion and James, we have come up with a position for a development services director, and so this is a position that would incorporate the old position of a planning and inspections director, and then also an engineering director. And so we feel like this restructuring would be great for these consolidated, for this consolidated position, and we believe in the reunification of planning and inspections and engineering department under one single leadership. And so with this consolidation, it leaves greater flexibility for our engineering department to hire an additional staff engineer. So when I started, six years ago, we were originally the development services department, where we had a development services director, and that housed our Main Street program, code enforcement, building inspections, engineering, and planning. And so we're kind of going back to that model, where a lot of what we do is in coordination with engineering, and so if we have one central leadership, we can all function well. We're all about removing silos, and I don't say we have one, but we're just making it easier for us to function as one single department. And I know we have discussions at the end, but do you have any specific for me, before I hand it over to Orion real quick? Perfect.
Thank you for letting us speak, our positions requests. Yeah, engineering fully supports the development services director. These bullet points kind of describe, very well describe what the position, what we do in engineering, or a lot of our tasks, and what the staff engineer would support us in doing. Currently, I do a lot of the permit review, construction inspection, and with the help of public services, they do a lot of the construction inspection, just the recent project down on South Broome. So Matt Cohen had to take a half a day off, and I'd take a couple hours off, Todd would come in for a couple hours, and we're all doing that inspection, where a staff engineer could come in, would hopefully, you know, be able to do that, and that'd be their, his or her position, to be doing that all day, rather than James or I or Todd and Matt. The other stuff going on is the plan review, we currently, now that Matt has gone, we were currently hired Kim Lee Horn to help us do the plan review, that's, a plan review for engineering takes 10 to 15 hours, and to work that into my schedule, and it's really difficult to find three hours here and three hours there to go and do a plan review, so we've been, worked that, and Kim Lee Horn's doing it, and Kim Lee Horn's charging us over $250 an hour for somebody to be doing that, that's a lot of money, and a lot more than what a staff engineer would be paid, even including benefits. The multiple surveys for a year, so each survey, I do a lot of small surveys around town, but just even get a survey to look at a project's 1,200 bucks, so to, anytime we have our staff engineer out there doing surveys for us, it'd be savings. I do parking lot design sidewalk, minor stormwater projects, South Church Street, I did all the design and survey, working with Todd, again, doing the inspections for that project, a staff engineer would come and insist with projects like that, and we wouldn't have to hire out inspection services. So it's a key element that would save James and I a lot of time to get our daily tasks and our overview, project management done, rather than being in the field as much as we are now. That's about all I have, if you have any questions. And so it's really, I guess the idea is, is that likely, we don't feel the need for the director of engineering, the public, or the development services director would come in, so we'd have the savings from the director of engineering paying somebody $50,000 to $70,000 less than what we would if we were to run in an engineering director. So we feel this is a cost savings for the town.
Makes sense?
Yep, and planning and engineering is so unified, we decided to color coordinate today, so you know this, we're in green and black, so that's how coordinated we are on a day-to-day basis.
Nice.
So again, having that one director to help with our color coordination would help. Thank you all.
No, I think this is a good example of kind of making lemonade out of lemons, since we lost Matt and Lisa, so I think consolidating and rethinking how we run that department has been a really good idea, and I think this is a good plan moving forward.
We're also very coordinated, and they've started calling themselves pleneering, right? Yeah. So, yeah, with this position, you know, bringing this in sooner rather than later, even within this fiscal year, because it's bringing in that director of planning and inspections, director of engineering, and consolidating it down into just that one position, so sooner rather than later, if possible, on that one. Next, we have public services, and they'll come up and speak to their requests, they do have a handout for you, you'll see up there at your, at your desk area, for those two texts that they'll, they will speak on.
Yeah, if you'll just refer back to your handout there, take a highlighter if you want, mark it up, it's kind of what I do. But in justification, for the request of two new personnel for the public service department, the growing demand of the public service needs and duties has grown tremendously. Our team has finally moved into our new facility, and now have room to grow our department. Along with the new facility and new town hall, our department will be taking care of the landscape and needs on a weekly basis. And most of this, we go down through here, this is all kind of new stuff that's going to get added to us. I didn't really include a lot of stuff that we already do, leaf collection, all that kind of stuff, but... So this, this will be our second year implementing our tree program with the town, broke up into five different zones I spoke about earlier. We trim one zone per year, all the street trees. Our department not only trims the street trees, but in the developments, but we also take out all the dead, dying, or diseased trees, and we're responsible for replacing those also. We noticed in our first year that we're not going to be able to keep up, I mean, it's a lot, you know, there's a lot of street trees in a lot of these developments. So that's, that's another reason why we're here, asking for extra personnel. Our department is also responsible for all the maintenance of town-owned sidewalks. Our team already takes care of all the grinding and trip hazards of sidewalk panels, and we plan to take on more sidewalk replacement projects with added personnel, so we don't have to contract out as much. Our engineering department has expressed the need to upgrade and enhance our crack ceiling and thermo striping around town. Our transportation engineer has a request that's come to him, that all stop signs have thermo stop bars in some of our bigger developments around town. Our plan is to purchase a commercial crack ceiling. Our plan is to purchase a commercial crack ceiling machine like we spoke about earlier to help our crews be able to take on the extra workload and the ongoing growth of the town and on streets. As we know, there are 15 plus or minus neighborhoods in the plans for the next two years, which will be adding department's workload and responsibility. Along with all of our street maintenance of 65-plus lane miles, at present time, I think it's maybe more than that now, this will help preserve our streets to get the most life out of them as possible. Our team also plans to execute several bridge repairs that Orion has been working on in the upcoming years as far as Mill Bridge, the hand railing repairs, whatever we can do around town that we can keep in-house, we want to try to do. Our department has implemented a career development plan last year, which is our CDP, and I plan on promoting two of our level-three folks to crew leaders to lead and teach the two maintenance tech one going forward. Our CDP has been very encouraging for the town and, and the future of our department. Also, as our town members, our team members grow into more difficult and enhanced roles, two maintenance tech level ones would be a huge help to keep our department on track with the growth in our department's responsibilities. In our program, we like to start everyone off at the level-one position so that we can, we can, so they can learn from more experienced teammates and get all the time and experience they will need to learn the Waxaw way of doing things. That's my justification. And like I said, that's nothing of our already doing, you know, our already jobs. This is all kind of new stuff that's been brought onto us. I think we've obligated ourselves to start installing speed humps, speed cushions at the last meeting also. So as I move people up, we got to start moving people in also, you know, to keep the training process going. And any questions for that?
I'd just like to add to this, also, we maintain all the vehicles in town. So with people adding cars, our mechanic, we don't take one of our guys into level-three and see if he will go part-time mechanic, part-time level-three. So that would help the mechanic get caught up. Because all the cars, we need your chainsaws, lawnmowers, more guys having a hard time.
Yeah.
So adding on to Matt, Matt did a really good job there. Also, bringing more of this focus in-house as far as maintenance is a huge cost savings. Instead of having to contract the work out, we're able to perform this work in-house and have that significant cost savings that we're already seeing, you know, at the smallest of scales, which is the speed cushions, starting to move into crack ceiling, road maintenance. Bring it, everything will be cheaper if, anything will essentially is cheaper if you are able to do it in-house. The moment you start to have to contract this work out, it becomes much more expensive. So this is a, also a cost savings in the long run for the town.
Any questions? There's got to be one, Arnie.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll hear from Ashley with business development.
So we're going to talk about the business development department today. We would like to add an administrative assistant in next fiscal year. So as you guys know, we moved our business development department to downtown, to the Duncan McDonald House in July. Our goal with this house is to ultimately open this up as a downtown welcome center and a business resource center. We would have regular hours at that office weekday and potentially weekend hours. And we'd be able to share maps and information about downtown, promote upcoming events and promotions, sell downtown merchandise and gift cards. And then ultimately, this person would be that first point of connection between downtown customers and the town of Waxaw and our department. It allows us to create a really strong relationship with our community as well as existing and potential businesses to Waxaw. It's, it, the Duncan McDonald House and this department, we ultimately serve as that primary source of information for opening, operating, and expanding a business in town. So having those regular office hours would be really helpful for us. This person would also provide administrative support for the department. So scheduling meetings, creating agendas and minutes for our three boards and committees that we manage, managing our department finances, as well as I said, being that first point of contact for the public and our inquiries for the business development department. Over the last few years, we've added a lot of responsibilities to the business development department. When I started, I started as the downtown director. And we added responsibilities to add in economic development. That was why we hired our promotions coordinator last year to help with that advertising and promotions for downtown. So this is really our next step in expanding economic development services for Waxaw. This position would allow, this position would support and allow for the expansion of our services. And this administrative staff would help Alara and I be able to add, add services to the department. For example, we are looking at creating an economic development strategic plan. So this could set the vision for what types of businesses we want to see here in Waxaw and what support services we want to provide for those businesses. We'd like to build a business recruitment program that brings new businesses into the areas, that looks at some of our, our prime sites in town, and helps imagine with those developers what could be put here, and then go and recruit those businesses. And it could help identify, advertise, and develop sites that are prime for economic development and job growth in Waxaw. It would allow us to formalize our entrepreneurial support program for existing businesses. And over the last few months, we've done a lot of one-on-one counseling with small business owners looking to come into Waxaw, making sure they've got their business plans put together, that they're looking at their finances correctly, that we're able to connect them with capital when they need capital for that. And so this would allow us to do a lot more of that counseling. And it would also help us ensure that we're able to carry out those strategies and goals that we're developing in our downtown master plan. I have ordered you guys a economic development handbook. So this was put together by the School of Government along with the North Carolina Economic Development Association. It's a short little handbook that gives you all of the one-on-one, 101 pieces of economic development. This is where we're heading, and to have staff help with this would be huge, just to help us be able to maintain this over the next few years. So happy to answer any questions for you guys.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have finance. Think back to the grants discussion that we kind of touched on earlier in the projects. Just have that fresh on your mind as Rosie comes up to talk about their staff request.
Y'all are awake for the finance again, right? Yeah. For the least exciting. All right. So I would like to add, as I get started, that this position we're requesting would report to finance, but it is a unified request across all departments to add this position due to the way grants affect all of us with the, with the workload. So for us, a grant administrator would centralize grant process for research, application, management, reporting, plus improve efficiency of all the aspects. The role would enhance our capacity to proactively pursue grants that align with our strategic goals, ultimately bringing more resources to our team, allowing us to make greater impact. This would help us build a more sustainable approach to grant management and better support the town's long-term goals. We currently have 10 active grants appropriations which require continuous monitoring plus quarterly or annual reporting, with an additional three which are currently pending review or award status. So grant activities are scattered throughout the town, throughout all the departments. And this has presented a multitude of complications due to lack of communication, limited knowledge of the grant requirements, increased burden on staff attempting to perform the required grant functions, which are research, application, management, all while multitasking to perform essential daily functions of their positions. So we're, we're showing that this approach, while workable in short term, limits our potential to secure and manage grants effectively. So we feel that adding this position would allow us to streamline the workload, improving the accuracy and thoroughness of our applications, and enabling more focus on high-priority That's what I have. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
No.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosie.
Next up, we already covered police, so I'll go through these slides and skip ahead to Parks and Rec. All right. So just keep in mind here, again, those projects that we discussed back in the CIP list earlier, they will be speaking to those in this staffing request as they go through each one.
Thanks, dear. You're welcome. Hello again. So we are going to go over what we talked about this morning, the learning center. So with that bid opening next week, it will require staffing to be at that location. We're looking at Monday through Friday, then weekend hours as well, to have a program coordinator and a customer service person there, and then also to help with those rentals that are part-time. So what we found, learning through the rec barn this past year, is we didn't have enough staffing time to meet the demands of the rentals themselves. So we're actually turning people away right now for the rec barn because we just don't have the staffing to be there in the evenings. So that is something that we're, we made that crossover to consider for the learning center. We also have lots of data that tells you about the meeting place venue that is currently being rented out numerous times a day and five days a week. So that's something that will cross over to the learning center as well, because that would take the place as a meeting place. With the, as you remember, with the learning center, we will have a study room, a teaching kitchen, the meeting places, of course, in the, in there, the computer lab, also the partnership with the library to have the book unit out front. But this is also, with the library leaving this area, this brought a need for the area where we have citizens that are in a sensitive population area that can't walk or get transportation to the new library site. And so now they're not getting the same services. And what that means is they, they don't get help with their job applications. They don't get help with their college applications. They can't fax a simple form out. They just have general questions where they just need some help with the computer. So we would have access to a computer that our IT team will help us with, make sure everything's secured. But then we'll have that access on a, operating hours, and then the computer lab for classes, especially with our seniors that, you know, might get a little in trouble clicking on things. It's a good way to teaching them how to navigate the internet. So with the, bringing onboard the learning center, it requires staff. So when we talked about this project, this was part of that discussion. But this would be a mid-year hire, so we wouldn't hire these team members until closer to January, but it's still within this operating budget. So again, it wouldn't be hitting in July, but it would be hitting closer to January when we opened up. Do you have any questions?
Well, Ms. Conrad spoke with us earlier. She mentioned that this would be a perfect item to put on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
To try and get funding. So you're going to consider doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second thing is the part-time attendant that you want to have work in the evenings. Is that part-time attendant going to be strictly at the learning center? Or if there are no activities or things going on at the learning center in the evening, can that position be split between the learning center and the rec barn?
So my teammates are going to help cross, we're cross-training. That's what we do with a lot of our departments anyway, we cross-train. They're going to, the next slide will explain the cross-training, but so that person can be back and forth. But the, the concern is we, the amount of rentals that we're receiving is immense. You're going to see a big budget jump, Ms. Robin's going to explain that, on the customer service side, where normally we get around $10,000 a year in rentals. We've surpassed that three times over, and we're only in January, right now, since July. So I'm just going to, we're going to show you that, that need. I'm going to see, this area is going to be such, it's already, we already know it's a need, that's the reason why we're doing the project. And again, it's taken the place of the McDonald House, that is a program space. When this is up and going, and then the meeting place, that we will make a decision on that later and what that, that life is going to be. But this is going to be a hub for two locations, and all those services that we are currently doing would go into the, in this one location. But yes, we cross-train on everything. Okay? I'm going to move on to, all right, so up, we've got the team over there. Ms. Robin's going to start us off with the, the customer service.
Yes. And just to add, I do have some stats for the rental side of things and bringing that in together. So we'll be able to talk about that a little bit well. But, but what we're asking for, for this piece, not the learning center, is a admin assistant customer service coordinator for our PSPR building. So basically, right now, we have moved in, we're excited, it's a multi-department kind of thing. And now we're huge team players. I love my team. I love, you know, I know public services, I've gotten to know David and Paul real well. But we do actually have people walking in now, way more than we used to. It's combining all these departments together. And currently, the customer service is being handled by myself, the admin manager, and events coordinator from Parks and Rec. And so we're basically splitting duties between making sure that customer service is handled, because we want to make sure that everybody that walks in is greeted, that we handle deliveries, we make sure that people are going where they need to go. But it's also the fact that we also are having a tag team, because our responsibilities aren't necessarily customer service at the front, so we're trying to like split that up. So if I'm at a meeting, or if somebody else is in a meeting, we just have to make sure that everybody's tagged up. The difference with the layout of this building versus our building before was that the window is kind of a little more open in our Parks and Rec building, where if somebody walked in, kind of all of us could help. But these two windows are actually in our individual offices. So I have a window in my office, and I have, Hayden has a window in his. And so when somebody walks into that front area, it's the one of two of us that are greeting them, which we do, and we're happy to do. But it is causing a little bit of disruption of our normal duties to try to keep up with that. So we're trying to kind of look for this person to be the consistent base of customer service for the PSPR building. But also, this is, this person would be helping with our rentals. So the biggest thing about all the offerings that we've done now is that we have six current facilities that we do rentals. And so those rentals have grown tremendously in the amount of inquiries and the amount of need. It's great, right? We have a meeting room for the meeting place, you know, there's a park that has a shelter. We have a lot of opportunities. But right now, we're at capacity with trying to handle the inquiries, the setups, the cleanups, the paperwork, the processing, all of communications. And so just as kind of an example, just so you can kind of see some stats, the meeting place last year for bookings for just the fiscal year, we had 167. This year, for the first seven months, we have 125. So we've already kind of, we're going to meet and surpass where we are just in the meeting place alone. The rec barn, just in the first seven months of this year, we have 261 rentals that have happened. And that was also impacted by the elections group that used the facility for a couple weeks and the holidays. So we have both long-term and short-term rentals that happen in the rec barn. And so that has tremendously grown of trying to keep up with those inquiries, trying to make sure we keep up with the demand. And we are, we're doing the best we can with the capacity, but we're not able to necessarily promote. We're not out there actively saying, hey, we have all these opportunities, because we just don't have the staff to keep up with those inquiries. Downtown Park, we have those two shelters. We basically have done 67 in the first seven months, and that's seasonal, think about seasonal. So not necessarily getting them in January, December, but spring, October, like the fall, all that, that's when you're going to see that. Town Creek Park Shelter, we actually still had 31 in this first seven months, even with the downtown park open, and so there is still opportunity there. Nesbit Park, we have eight this year. Obviously, WAA, we have their partnership with them, we don't have necessarily a lot of field availability for that, but when we do get an inquiry, we do vet it through WAA, make sure that availability is all good, and then we do have that as an opportunity. And then just to add also, we do borrow equipment, so we have partnerships with several groups throughout, that we have equipment that we borrow, let them borrow, like Millbridge, Turkey Trot, the, there's another 5K at Millbridge, that was for domestic violence group, that was doing that charity. We do dare graduations, we do that rental, like borrow kind of equipment, and then we do back-to-school bash and girls on the run, both equipment and logistics. So we have all those, along with third-party special, special events. So we basically have, right now, four, we had the St. Patty's Day, we had Union County Pride, we had a nifty-thrifty, and we had a Christmas caroling event. Just those four third-party special event rentals, spent, me, I'm actually the one that manages that, it's about 70 hours of work for just that. So we've looked at numbers, we've looked at, you know, all the information, and this particular person could help streamline rentals for us. And that would help make the consistency of customer service, help us with the demand, and make sure that everybody's handling their duties, because right now, it used to be a small part of our duties, and now it's become a very large part. So this person would help us with that. So. Any questions on that?
Do you have a sense for how much, you know, what proportion of the costs of running the rec barn are covered by the fees?
So I actually have revenues, just to kind of, I can break this down for you even further, and I'd be glad to email this out for you, but I just have a, a total revenue number. So just kind of as an example, just to give you like, a, a little bit of a history. So in fiscal year '23, so '22 to '23, we brought in 96, 38, 01 in facility rentals, just facility rentals. Fiscal year '24, it was $10,710.62. So far, for the first seven months, we haven't even finished January yet, we were at $29,482.80. That's just for the first seven months. So just keep in mind that the rec barn and the downtown park, like, I can, I'd be happy to break down all the numbers for you even further, but I wanted you to have a snapshot of both hours of labor that it takes, the revenues we're bringing in, that doesn't count, those revenues don't count, time for setup, time for cleanup, time to book, time for people like, oh, I changed my mind, I don't want that, you know, it doesn't account for any of those things, that's just numbers of how much brought in. So I would be glad to share more data for you.
Alright, so I will touch on the part-time recreation center attendant, and to answer your question, Ms. Brenda, we will keep the job title the same, so the position title for part-time at the Learning Center will be the same as this part-time recreation center attendant, with cross-training, as Deana mentioned. So that way, we have a small pool of part-timers who can also help cover for one another, because if someone gets sick or goes on vacation, obviously, we understand the staff has a life outside of work, and for a lot of our part-timers, this is just, I mean, well, part-time, but it's not their main source of income, or it's something that they're just doing as a time filler, so we know that they're not going to be available all the time. So having a backup person is really helpful, so that way, we don't always have to pull from our full-time staff to cover those hours. So when you think about the rec barn, the way that it's currently staffed is as if it's one facility, but in reality, it's two. So we have two buildings that have two separate amenities. Building A is what we call the front building, that has the batting cages, and then Building B is that big indoor turf area, and then technically, we still have the outdoor turf area. So how we're managing that right now is by watching security cameras when staff is in the building, or we're only programming in one building at a time, so that way, staff can leave and go to the other building. So for just the rentals alone, in the evenings, we really need to have an additional person to cover the back building. Right now, we have a part-time person who's there in the evenings to assist in one building, but if we have rentals going on at the same time at the other building, then they're having to go back and forth between each building, and God forbid, something happens in one building and they're not able to respond quick enough, so we really need to have a staff person in each building, especially there in the evenings. The second part-time position would be for mornings and daytimes. We have wonderful fitness equipment that we want to be able to offer outside of just our contracted fitness classes, and so this other part-time person could be in that facility while we have open fitness hours, so that way, community members can come in and utilize that equipment. And we have a staff person that is stationed in that building during that time, so if anything were to happen, or if anybody needed anything, somebody would be there. So that would be the purpose of having two. And while they are 24 hours or less, it is typically less. So these people are in the building whenever rentals are going on or programs are going on, they're not necessarily sitting there just babysitting an empty building. So we would utilize them when things are actually happening. So you might have any question about part-time staff? Okay.
So I'm going to be talking to you all about the two full-time positions for the cultural park deck. So as Dex said earlier, as the town continues to grow in terms of population, we get more residents and we need more space for the outdoors for Parks and Rec. I currently have a team of four who maintain and take care of all the parks and facilities throughout the town. That's in seven towns, up to five miles of trail, and about seven facilities. So as you can tell, in regards to just that team of four, they're very stricken in terms of time. We don't have time to, we have time to do daily tasks and weekly tasks, but when it comes to terms of projects of enhancing the parks, fixing items throughout the parks, we're, we fall behind in terms of that. I do have numbers I could, I can share with you, all in terms with GO-GOV, the work order system that we have, that can showcase this, that I currently have a few work orders that are still open, and they run about, for the past year, year and a half that they've been open, we just haven't had time to get to them yet. So we also have added responsibility of helping out with events, the setup, maintaining, cleanup of that. So whenever we have large events throughout the town, we have to step away from our daily and weekly tasks to help set that up. And while it's something that we do enjoy, it is something that does take away, take our time away from our daily tasks with that. So that's the, for the two full-time positions. Do you have any questions about that, before I roll into the part-time position I'm asking as well? Okay. So the downtown park, this, this part-time ask is for the downtown park. In talking with Amy, her and I have talked in regards to it, for what our pros are and justification for this is. And so one of the big asks is safety for the park staff and closing the park. Currently, during the winter, it closes at 6:00 in the afternoon, so it's still somewhat light out sometimes, it does, it does tend to get dark earlier at this time. But definitely in the summertime, it does get dark, and we're only having one staff who goes out and is closing the park at that time. With the increase in popularity of the park, more support in the high-demand areas and times would be greatly accessible and helpful, and also in terms of, for rentals of, rentals and events that are occurring at the park. We do have, I was out at the park yesterday, and it was one of our first good-temperature days that we've had for a while, and the park was very, very busy, and just standing there, watching the park, we had numerous kids that we had to go and tell, you know, safety aspects of the park, stop climbing on top of the building, come down, you know, jumping off and all that fun stuff. So having additional staff in that sense helps out with the safety and the security of the kids there, and the regular upkeep of the park as well. So, any questions on that?
What's the current staffing level of the park when it's typically open? Is there always one person on-site at least?
Yes, we currently have one person on-site at all times at the park. Alright, thank you.
Do you have any other questions about for a Park and Rec request? Okay, thank you.
Deana, I just had one small observation.
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, in some of the other requests, we've, we've seen the actual pay grade was added. Do you think you'd be able to add that, so that, or just map it into the matrix?
Yep, I sure can.
Thank you.
And I actually do have one other question. So I know that we've been closing the parks for holidays. How, is it possible to have staffing for those days, and how could you use maybe one of these positions for that?
That's a tricky one. So we can have wellness with the staff. There's only a few holidays that we close completely, that would be like, your Christmas holiday kind of thing, like Christmas Day. Maybe we close early on Christmas Eve, we close, there's modified hours on those days. I'm, I'm going to be advocating for my team for them to have a rest on those major holidays where we're all closed, so I would advocate for them to have that day of rest. But the, the extra part-time would help modify those hours to be later. Our biggest request was to be open later, especially for the downtown park, or open earlier for my early morning walkers that want to get in there early. So that modification could be made with this part-timer.
Okay, so I guess, so to keep the downtown park open on a holiday, when, you know, families might want to get out there, and like, I wanted to go show my family the, the downtown park. How much, well, you would need staff, you're saying, for this, and how much staff would you need for?
So we'd have to modify the, if you're requesting for park or facilities to be open on major holidays, it would just, it would be a staff request of having them there. Certain amenities need staff at these locations. The downtown park is a commitment that we made as a town to have a person there all the time, just like with the rec barn. There's a commitment to having, when it's open, to have a staff member there, because you have a multimillion-dollar facility that, that you want to make sure is upkept properly.
And I agree with you, Deana, you know, the Parks and Rec department works from, like, October till Christmas Eve, like crazy. And I think it would be hard not to burn anyone out, because even if you hire a part-timer, that part-timer will be working those events too. And so a holiday, we don't, you don't close for very many holidays.
I think there's four, or?
Like, Christmas Day.
Right.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, and New Year's.
New Year's Day.
Do we close for Easter? I don't know if we close for Easter.
I guess my point was, so I didn't know if they could be, the gates be open, families can walk around or use the equipment without staff being there.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, we, we only lock the, there's, 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 there's gates that might be not locked, and some gates that are locked.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to say this without, because we have to worry about, the main thing is worry about vandalism.
I got complaints from citizens about it, that's why I'm...
Yeah, no, I get you, I get you. So the main thing is about, is our mischief makers, because we're constantly having to, Barnes and the skate park, got a little more mischief makers there. And because it's not a enclosed environment, with the master plan, we'll, we'll make those decisions on what you want it to be. With the, with the downtown park, because of the type of amenities that it has in it, there's, there's a amount of risk that I'm, all of our jobs is to keep us out of a lawsuit. I say that to my team every day. So it's to minimize risk, and that's, that's all I'm trying to do, Ms. Tracy. Good questions. Like the interaction. Do I have any more questions?
Any more questions from the board?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Rec.
Alright, just a little bit. Alright, now we're going to transition to communication staffing. This is one that, even though this, these, the two positions had been included in this fiscal year budget, it's one that seems to be, there seems to be still some questions around communication staffing, and so just trying to provide a little bit more information, some research that we've done, hearing from Haven, providing the research, allowing any questions that you may have, to try to, to get a little bit of feedback and direction with where we want to go with this. So first, I will take it to Ian with Haven, and he will go over the services that they have provided up to this point.
You have the clicker.
Yes. I'll get you.
Yeah, just toss it back and forth? No, just kidding. Hey there, so just as a reminder, the town of Waxaw contracts out all of its communications needs to Haven Creative. We're a communications agency that was founded here in Waxaw. Our CEO and founder, Jenny Buchholz, is a Waxaw resident, and we have been working with the town of Waxaw for the last nine or 10 years to provide those communication services. Our scopes have evolved and changed over time to meet town needs, from both growing resident populations, to changing staff requirements, to new strategic initiatives, capital projects, et cetera. Currently today, your contract with Haven Creative runs through June 30th of 2025. At that point, we would either have to renegotiate or change the structure of the communications team within the town of Waxaw. Right now, the town of Waxaw gets from Haven a pretty substantial level of support. Jenny Buchholz sits in the org chart as the communications director. In a typical government structure, I sit in the position of communications manager. She and I both share public information officer duties. We also have a full team of account managers, graphic designers, copywriters, and digital staff that fill out other roles and functions that town governments typically provide communication services for. Namely, graphic design is a really big need for the town of Waxaw. There's a lot of things that we've done with town staff in relation to graphic design. We also were supporting a town staff until this summer or last summer to do website and social media services, and when she left town staff, we assumed those roles. So we are functionally all-in-one communications department for the town. So any website updates, social media posts, media inquiries, strategic communications campaigns, we support town staff and your board and all of those communications. Because of the transition at several leadership positions within town staff, we did have originally a contract that stepped back our support levels as we looked at adding in communications staff. With the transition away from manager Wells, and then several other directors, it was requested that we maintained our current level of support, which we have done and which we'll continue to do until June 30th. I know there were some questions about that, but I'm happy to kind of go through what our day today is. I also have provided, as an addendum in your attachment for review, a mid-year communications report that shows some of what we've done in the first part of this fiscal year, and some of the projects and initiatives that we're working on in the rest of this fiscal year. This is a conversation that we have had, I believe, with the board for two straight board retreats now, about what communications might look like within the town of Waxaw. Emily's going to show some research that she did in a minute on what similar-sized communities have for dedicated on-staff communications teams. And this was a model that we presented to the board last year about what a communication staffing structure could look like. I don't necessarily believe... I don't necessarily believe that this is what it has to be. And I think there is some alternate versions of what this could look like that would still support what the town does need. I can go through what some of those required positions should be, what some of those key functions are where we spend most of our time, where I think the town could experience a lot of cost savings on having an in-house staff person or staff persons supporting staff communication needs as well as reaching town residents. As you can see on the slide, we had, based on town growth as well as staff needs evolving over time, a scaling department for communications. I think you can really narrow that down or revise that accordingly depending on budgets or depending on how you work with outside partners. Like a Haven Creative doesn't necessarily have to be us to fill in some of those roles. So, we've been doing this for, like I said, about nine or 10 years. We love working with the Town of Waxaw. We are really proud of all the work that we've been able to do with town staff and supporting the growing community here. However, we also feel it's in the best interest of the Town of Waxaw that you do have some sort of on-staff communications professional, specifically in the Communications Director or Manager seat with a Public Information Officer background. There's a number of media inquiries and mentions that Waxaw receives on a yearly basis. As you'll see in their report, Waxaw was mentioned in the media last year over 1,400 times. So, it's, for being a small community, it is an outsized presence in the news media. And I think that is something that, having that in-person dedicated communication staff who knows how to handle media inquiries and mentions would be a really strong addition to the town staff and vision you have for the community moving forward. I think we can.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder that the staffing model is something you've seen over the past couple of retreats. And it doesn't have to be this. It's something we can work with and change up as needed to work together to kind of come up with the best model for us. Reminder that Haven has expressed an interest to step away from providing the services with the town and suggesting that we do bring on internal staff. Just the need is there, and they've identified that and suggested that to us. And another reminder that we did already have the Digital Marketing Specialist. That was an existing position, and it's just currently just vacant and open. And then, the Communications Manager is a role that was added in for the last quarter of this fiscal year. So, that is already in the budget as well. So, this, so I know there was a concern, I think, one with the title. It was Communications Director versus Manager. We can certainly, if that's a concern, it can certainly be something looking like a manager position as well as there was a concern expressed over, I think, it being its own department. And that doesn't have to be either. If we don't want to create an additional department, we can certainly put it under a different department such as Admin. In the research, I found that was a common one where it was put under Administration. So, that's something we could absolutely do as well.
Can I add?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think the big thing, regardless of what the position is called, is that you want someone in that manager-director role, whatever that is called, with that Public Information Officer experience. That's really what you're looking for, is a PIO for the town. Regardless of what you call them, you really want someone with that media training that can support your media inquiries and your crisis comms.
Good point, thank you. So, in front of you, I did, we did a little bit of research. We were curious what other municipalities do in the state, those that are similar in size to us. Some in the research are a little bit smaller, some a little bit larger. But just want to provide you some background on the places that we reached out to and what that looks like. So, those spreadsheets are at your desk area there. So, the research did overwhelmingly show that municipalities do have their own internal communication staff, whether it's its own department or not, they did have it. My next slide will show, we did have 17 municipalities respond. And of those, only one did not have internal communication staff, the rest did. Again, a mix of how many staff members, it ranged from one to three, and a mix of its own department and not. I believe six of them are their own department, and then the rest fall under, most commonly, Admin. And so, just wanted to provide a little bit of background research on that to show you kind of what other municipalities are doing and to see if you have any questions on that. And if you have any additional research on this end, as far as on Haven's end for this as well, you can chime in with that as well.
Yeah, I think this really supports what we know and understand as well. I do have additional research that we did pull and prep for this that I can grab and share with you all about similarly sized communities. And they all had between one and two staff associated with their comms team. So, it's right in line with what you have on the screen before you.
And then, internal communication staff, why is it important? Again, it brings that in-house support to staff. To have the internal staff members for our communications needs is huge. There are many responsibilities, duties that come with this role. So, it's important to have someone that can meet the needs of the town. Also serves the residents, businesses and visitors Waxaw by strategically distributing valuable, relevant information on various platforms in a timely manager manner. And then, again, some of the duties, there's media, there's public information requests. You stress the importance of the Public Information Officer piece of that. Community engagement, branding, marketing, social media pages, Waxaw website. I would also like to add that something we would like to bring is also more internal communications. And the comm staff would be a huge part of this as well in getting, not just external communications, but internal communications as well. We've identified that need, and so that would be a huge part of this role as well. And then, also too, something to think about, you know, this is really not something where we can spread these duties among our current staff. One, because staff really is at capacity. And two, the duties associated with this requires extensive knowledge and experience. So, especially when it comes to the crisis management, the public information, things like that. So, we really want someone in this role that's experienced and knowledgeable in that to provide for the town in the best way possible.
I would also add, if that's okay, that the other piece to this that's really important and very difficult for communities that try to spread this duty across all staff is having a brand manager. As you all know, the Town of Waxaw has a very strong and prosperous community brand. And so, having that one dedicated staff person who can say, hey, Parks and Rec, police, Public Works, other community partners, this is how we use the logo, this is how we represent the brand, is really important for continuing the vision that you all are setting out for the community overall. And that's a really hard thing to spread across multiple departments and staff people.
And just from a consistency standpoint too, just keeping everything consistent.
Absolutely.
To the communication staff and duty, so again, in our budget is the public, the Communications Manager and then the Digital Marketing Specialist. So, the Communications Manager, I'll kind of go over a high level, kind of the duties associated. So, the Communications Manager would be the communication strategy, the policies, leadership team and BOC reporting, presentations, overseeing the social media, the graphics, is quality control, brand management, maintaining that brand standard across all communications. The PR and media relations is a huge part, and the crisis management. Because this involves communicating with the public, especially when it comes to crisis management and things like that, making sure we're communicating the best way possible. So, that is a very, very key part of this role, very important. And we wanted someone in here that's knowledgeable and experienced in that. And then, the Digital Marketing Specialist, they are going to be working on website user experience and content updates, HubSpot automation, social media planning, writing, scheduling, monitoring, responding, monthly reporting, and graphic design. So, just wanted to give you a snapshot of what kind of the high-level duties of these two positions are.
And Haven's been doing the public information for the police department too, right?
So, we support them with media inquiries. And then, we also will guide them if they need it on social media, but they manage their own social media page. We just provide templates and some input, but we don't do all of their communications.
Right, but if there was a crisis, has Jenny been handling that or?
Yeah, so I can give you recent examples too, but any media inquiries from public safety or crime issues that come across either the chief or deputy chief's desk, they refer those to us, and we work with them to handle those media crises and put out holding statements, et cetera.
And I believe last time I spoke to Chief Dax, he was researching Public Information Officer training, advanced training for the police department. So, I mean, I think that's another great avenue as far as, you know, criminal investigations and that sort of thing. Because there's a certain way to deal with that rather than, from a town perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. There's two different models for doing public information duties with police departments. Some communities, like I believe the Town of Apex, and there's a few others, have one dedicated PIO, similar to how Waxaw's been doing it, where they cover both town and PD. And then, there are other communities that have a PIO embedded on the police department. Some of those departments are a little larger, so they can kind of necessitate having a dedicated Public Information Officer. Sounds like Waxaw's PD is growing, so maybe there's a part-time PIO kind of role that they could establish. That is a very dedicated skill set that if you were to identify an existing staff, that PIO training would be very important, but probably also having some sort of counselor or advisor to help guide them through the first few crises. Because as I can attest to, the first few media crises are a little intense until you get your legs under you. So, it's something that they should definitely consider, and I think we would support that. Just with the right structures and training in place, it becomes more doable than just throwing a deputy to the wolves of the media, which is a little stressful at times, so.
Any other questions before we go to the next slide? So, just a summary on what we've covered. The due communications positions are in our current fiscal year budget with the Communications Manager in the last quarter. Just the need for internal staff for the reasons we've kind of went over. And then, again, this does not have to be its own department if we don't want it to be. I mean, it can fall under something like Admin, and that is common in the research that we did. And are there any other questions regarding comms? I know, like I said, I know there were some questions and some uncertainty surrounding this. So, we wanted to try to provide a little bit more information to hopefully help to navigate to, what do we do next with this? So, any feedback and direction we can get would be great. We can move forward with that.
Richard, do you want to re-present your idea that, sorry, Commissioner Don, do you want to re-present the idea you had surfaced during the last, during the last meeting where we discussed whether it was needed or not to be its own department? The last retreat, sorry.
At the retreat last year?
Yeah.
Regarding the comms department?
Yeah.
I don't recall exactly what I said a year ago.
I think the idea was whether we should bring it in to be a full department or?
I mean, at the moment, I feel like it makes sense to have one internal person. And, you know, maybe the other creative work could be somewhat distributed or even with Haven still to support here and there if needed.
Yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable with that, having a separate department and maybe one person. Just because I don't want to, I don't want to be overzealous about hiring people. And even in speaking to Jenny earlier, a couple of months ago, she did feel like the, what was it, the specialist, what was the title?
Digital Marketing Specialist, yes.
Might have been an overlap, so perhaps we can do without that and see how it goes with one person, I mean.
Yeah, we explore options. I mean, speaking from, to Haven, I mean, is that something, we can explore options? And is that something that Haven is willing to take on, some of those, still hang on a little bit and take some of those duties, have our comms manager?
Or just on an as-needed basis and call them, not really a contract, but just say, hey, if we really need you to brand something or a new crazy graphic design that we need, you know, do it on an as-need basis rather than hold a contract because the budget demands are high, and I want to make as many people happy as possible, so.
Yes, understood. Want to keep an eye on that.
So, I know one of the comments I had made during the last retreat with Commissioner Don was that the types of services that Haven provides are highly skilled and multi-threaded.
Yes.
And the concern, I can't believe I'm saying this, but the concern I have that I think is shared with Commissioner Don is we risk having to create a department that can quickly become a much larger department. And so, I think I'm of the opinion that maybe one PIO or something of that nature, someone of that nature who can manage the agency, whether it's Haven or another one, since they've socialized and a desire to move on, which would mean maybe we just put an RFP out there and see if there's another agency in the area that would be interested to help Waxaw.
Yeah, definitely understand that it being its own department and that concern that's out there. We do have some very small departments, like, for example, business development is still at two, about to go to three. But again, looking at the staffing on this, we would work with the board to make sure that it's not getting, you know, out of control with a number of staff that would be associated with this. And again, it doesn't have to be its own department, it can fall under a different one. So, it's something we can monitor and assess as we go along.
Yeah, I'm fine with it not being its own department, but I still think that there needs to be the two positions because there's a difference between communication and a person who does graphics and design, web developing, those are two different skill sets. And we already had the two positions in the budget. So, I'm not understanding why there's the need to go to just the one position that's not as, doesn't cover all of the things we need.
Yeah, I think what we're hearing though in this, in this presentation from all the departments is there's, there is a need to expand personnel. And so, if there's an opportunity maybe to tighten our belts on one, I suppose, then that might be worth exploring.
Yeah, I think we need to, you know, take a baby step and not create a department necessarily, you know. It does help to have an internal person, and we probably would save some money having one internal point person. And then, just distribute maybe some of the creative work. I know we have other creative people here who might want to step in. And also, Haven have created quite a foundation of creativity, I would say. You know, when we spoke with you guys, they mentioned that they're creating a repository, like a sort of a template repository so that staff can go to the shared drive and they'll all, you know, have the consistent design and all of that. So, yeah.
If I could address?
No, I would agree. I think, I think Haven's set us up for tremendous success with the standardization across all of our branding and messaging and templates. So, it should be pretty easy for somebody else to pick it up.
Yeah, if I could just address, I think starting with your comms manager or PIO type of role and seeing what skill set you find might determine any future staffing needs. So, if they have some basic graphic design skills, you could maybe get away without the Digital Marketing Specialist. But until you know the skill sets of the person you're bringing in to that PIO role, it's kind of hard to say whether you need one or two. I do firmly agree though that, you know, your comms manager is the first one. And if you don't have the skill set you need, then maybe you look at the Digital Marketing Specialist because those are two very distinct skill sets. And it's really hard to find a unicorn, as we say in the hiring world.
Yeah, it's very specific from what I'm gathering on the graphic design versus the kind of like social media aspects. Like, sometimes that is kind of a unicorn in that it's hard to find somebody that can do both.
Yep.
And so, that's been common in the research as well. Again, not asking for additional staff in what we already have in the, in the budget. It's just something that, as he said, looking at that manager position. And then, we would certainly want, if we wanted to add it on, add on another with that, which the Digital Marketing Specialist or however that position would look, they would be able to hire that person to fit the need of the role.
And perhaps we could look at interns as colleges around here and internship needs in graphics.
in graphic design that perhaps we can look in that direction and that would be cost-effective or start off with a part-timer so then we're not looking at a benefits package if the need be. So, I mean, I think we have to explore some other options. There are so many people out there in graphic design these days, going to school for that, a lot of local colleges that have the need for internships and be a great way to tap, you know, the youth.
Absolutely. And one of the things that we do with the number of communities that are ready to take that next step and have that internal person is, you know, we will still work with you if you have big campaign needs that require additional capacity or if you have specific design projects. An example is we worked with Indian Trail last fall for a bond issue campaign to help them with graphic design and campaign iteration. So we've, like I said, really enjoyed, you know, all the time we've spent with Waxaw and want to continue to support you all. So if there are opportunities like that in the future, you know, we're definitely not closing the door to either amending our current contract in July or coming back in for project work as you all might need. But outsourcing needs that you don't have is obviously a solution because you've been doing it for the last nine to 10 years, so.
We can explore some of these options that have been discussed today and provide, provide more information if that's, if that's something you would, would like us to do. Absolutely. Any more questions?
Thank you.
All right, so here is a summary all on one page of the staff request for the new fiscal year. Didn't include communications on here because again, it's not requesting new positions, it's just touching back on those positions that were already in our current budget. So a summary is planning and inspections and engineering, the one new full-time position, public services, two new full-time positions, business development, one new full-time position, finance, one new full-time position, police, the six new full-time positions, and then parks and rec, five new full-time positions and four new part-time positions. So that's 16 full and four part-time to total 20. Again, I know it seems like a lot, but hopefully we broke it down into digestible pieces to provide you all the information, to give you a kind of high-level overview, but certainly if there is more information needed on more specifics for these roles, we're happy to pull that information for you. Any more questions for me or the whole group as a whole?
Maybe I missed it, but IT is on the list? Was there?
IT, when we were meeting as a team, we were looking at, does IT, because more staff coming on, do they need more staff? Right now, they're okay, they said. So no, no fiscal year request for IT as of now. Nick, okay, you changing things up on me, Nick? Come on up, Nick.
We're good.
You scared me.
We'll get back with you later as far as our needs. However, with all this going on, obviously you see, you know, the needs for the town, we'd like to see, first of all, how we can help with some of this stuff because like the learning center, learning center will need some technology assistance, right? So we're going to see on our side if we can't help with that, you know, a couple of other situations such as that. But we want to see how this all plays out and then possibly there will be a need for an additional staff next year or the year after. So we just don't want to jump the gun and say, ah, give us another person and not know totally what they're going to end up doing. Like to come in after the fact when we know the needs are. We got to step up our game a little bit to cover that until everything smooths out, that's why we're here. Make sense?
Thank you, Nick. Any additional questions? Thank you.
Okay, this next, we making, I'll make it a short presentation, but you do have a few pieces of property now that we moved into this building, Parks and Recreation is in the, in the other building. Your, let's, downtown recreation property is now vacant. They're still using it for storage, there's, there's some things, but there's no bodies there. The Niven Price Lot is currently a parking lot, but both of these properties are bringing in interest from outside people that would like to do something with this property. You're bound by state statutes as to how you can dispose of your, you know, property and there's certain, certain guidelines you had to meet. But as staff, we're kind of interested, is the town wanting to continue holding on to these two pieces of property or is there interest in making these properties available for something else? You are very fortunate that you have a very vibrant downtown. Because you have a vibrant downtown, you don't have any spaces for new business. There are businesses interested in downtown, and I think they would like to see, you know, those opportunities to expand. These two properties may have that for you. The, let's see, Niven, the Niven Price Lot is a parking lot and as you know, parking is at a premium downtown. That is something that will be discussed in your long-range downtown plan, so you may want to hold on, come on to these pieces of property until you finish that plan or you may want to move forward with something. Now, the, the former public services property, you heard Dina mention, you know, possibly redoing that where they could store mowers and equipment for the parks. You got all this stuff we've got stored at the old downtown office property. When you have events, you've got, you know, barriers and cones and flags and all kind of stuff that you're storing that needs somewhere to go. And I think their thought is that makes a, you know, a, a good location to, you know, to sort as a central point to store all that stuff, to take care of all of our mowers and tractors that are taking, you know, care of the parks and everything. So I guess we're just basically looking from guidance from the board. Are you interested in any of these? You want to hold on to them? Do you want to do nothing? Do you wait until, you know, your, your, let's say downtown master plan is complete or you want to consider?
So Ms. Dean and I spoke about this a little bit and she mentioned that there was a more long-term plan that was developed a few years back that kind of talked about how some of these facilities would be used moving forward. So if there's a chance to kind of talk through that a little bit and if you have any slides to show us, that'd be great.
I don't have any slides, but I do have today, but I have actually some tomorrow that will go through the Brevard Street, the former public services, and then give you some contents of our, our offices on 317 North Broom. So at this time, that, that location is still housing our parks, mowers and their equipment at that location and their touchdown spaces until the request came in to renovate Brevard Street. So Brevard is, we, we moved our public services out for a reason. So it's, it's very, you know, responsible of us to make sure that if we put somebody else into that space that we make sure it gets renovated so it can support humans in that space. So we're asking for renovations for that space on Brevard that helps support south side of 75, on the equipment for park and rec, also our emergency management and support the downtown park. This also will eventually support our event center downtown when y'all decide in the future for 317. I'm requesting let the dust settle, give us a year to kind of figure out all the playing pieces. That gives the downtown master plan information to come back and then you can actually kind of see where the puzzle pieces are for those particular two properties. The meeting place got placed on because we, it needs some renovations and when we were talking about a possible hub for the police department, concerns came up because of those renovations. That's something we need to talk about of what y'all want that to be, what, what is its future? I'm still unsure about its historical value, so that's something we need to research. But what we're doing for Brevard is we're actually researching on what it takes to get us up to 100% for people to be there and then we would do the same thing for the meeting place if that's what y'all choose us to go down that path. But we know that that's too small for what we heard earlier about the need because it's rented, it's rented out a lot and it could, that, having the learning center is going to take the place of that. So again, we are, we're still in use of 317 North Broom, asking for help on renovation of Brevard Street to support all those, those departments because public services is still in need for help, help with the cemetery. Everything's connected. Any questions?
So you don't see the North Broom location as being expendable at any point?
That's not my decision. I'm asking you to give, give us a year to let the dust settle for us to get everything in the right spot before you make land decisions.
Okay.
Yep. But Brevard, Brevard's kind of sacred.
How much land is it down at Brevard that we own? How big is that lot?
There's two lots on, we own, we're basically the, where the road is and the fence line and then it goes back near the creek that's right there. That's where we'd have the pad connection for our residents on that, that side of Hillcrest area and to the school and to the learning center so that we, we ran out of funds when we did the downtown park and that was, when you have to rack and stack, I understand about budgets as well, we had to, we, we said that we can do that at a later date and that's what the part of grant is going to hopefully give us the opportunity to do.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Dina. So we have quite a few large budget requests we've heard so far today and the spirit of behind building these facilities was we could get rid of the old ones. I think if we, it's my opinion, I think if we were to hold on to those or maybe even put more money into it, that would probably not be received very well.
The, Brevard has always been in the master plan to be a support hub for Waxaw. That was not, that's literally been on my books for, ever since I've gotten here. So that was never a questionable site to sell. Now, 317, yes, I completely understand that. But with the master plan, the downtown master plan, you'll have more knowledge on what to do with that property when that comes back. That's the reason why I'm just asking to, to wait a minute.
I had the same thought as you with, with the, you know.
There's holy water boiling over somewhere.
I'm so glad y'all are working together though, this is awesome.
The rationale, the rationale, you know, for this, these buildings was that some of the old properties could be sold and the old Parks and Rec building especially, it's in a prime commercial location, we want commercial development.
Not saying that it's not.
The only, you know, other thought I had was, is there, you know, I forget the details of the NC 16 widening, but would that property be impacted by that? No.
No, sir.
It only goes to where the parkway is, right?
Yeah, or where the, yeah, the parkway, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
You're just asking that to hold on to 317 North Broom Street?
Until Brevard is ready.
Brevard is ready and then the downtown master plan is being worked on, so we hope to have that by end of the year.
Yeah, so we'll have that completed by September.
September.
So we, the town owns a lot of property downtown, which is great because we can control a lot of that infill development that happens downtown. So in the master plan, our, we put a lot of focus on what those infill developments could be and could look like. So the parks building, for example, is in a great location for redevelopment. It is right there next to that big lot that we use for parking right now and one of the big parts of the master plan will be looking at those infill lots that we have downtown. That, that lot in particular, the Niven Price Lot and the Community Corner Lot. So, you know, as, as, as Manager Hicks mentioned, we, we have a need for commercial space downtown. We don't have anything available and we have 80 businesses on a list that want somewhere to go. So we have great opportunity and we are working on that in that downtown master plan. So we, we've got a lot of good things coming, but we, we could come back in September, October with another report of, obviously here's what came out of the downtown master plan, what next?
And I think in conversations that Ashley and I have had, including Dina as well, regarding the downtown master plan, a big part of this is going to be balancing where we put parking versus where we put businesses. Right now, we have two parking lots, Community Corner and Niven Price, that are in, any real estate agent would call that beyond prime location, USDA ultra-prime, whatever they call it. It is in some of the best possible commercial land in town, in the county potentially. So we need to be very thoughtful and very careful about what we do with it and where we put a parking spot versus where we put a, a business. And then on top of that, what kind of businesses we want to attract. They can't all be bars, they can't all be restaurants, so we need to think about what mix is needed and that's a big part of the downtown master plan, I think, is where to put parking and where to put a building.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I don't want folks to think that we're just going to give up all the parking to put up a couple of new businesses. It's, parking is a, is a key aspect of downtown because as you all know, people complain about it very regularly, but Dina and I get complaints and emails on a regular as well as there's no business, there's no room for any business downtown or even all of Waxaw. So it's, it is a big problem, it's a good problem to have, as Mr. Hicks mentioned, but we're going to be thoughtful about how we solve this too.
Yeah, I, I mean, for example, we've been sitting here since, what, eight? I have three emails in my inbox of people who want spaces downtown and I can't, I can't tell them to go anywhere. They'll go on the list of 80, so.
Anything else?
So why do we want to hold on to the building for a year? I mean, is it storage?
So right now, 317, the park, the park staff still has, we have our equipment there and that's their touchdown spaces.
But that's a touchdown space until you can get Brevard up and?
Brevard can be equipped to have all our equipment moved down to there and then, and then their touchdown spaces be moved to there and then that is then our event hub when we're downtown for events. So that's when we have, we, we take the kitchen sink with us wherever we go and we just need a place to touchdown in the downtown to do that when we do the events.
You're saying Brevard would be the hub?
Brevard. Brevard would be the future hub.
The future hub, right, but so in the interim though, I mean, do we have enough space here?
Unfortunately, no. The, the PS PR building was built 50% smaller than what we intended in the beginning. All of the, now we have a location where public services has all their equipment in one place, which is amazing and wonderful, but there is not room for the Parks and Rec maintenance, park maintenance, equipment in our new facility. And I would love to take you on a tour.
I was going to add, if you look at the old public services, but, you know, you know, building, you may be better off building a new storage facility somewhere as opposed to taking an old facility, renovating and, you know, changing it because your cost is more likely going to be higher to fix the old facility. Because your cost is more likely going to be higher to fix the old facility than it would to build something new. Just keep that in mind as you move forward. You probably ought to be looking at both options.
And the Brevard Street would support both. Questions? Gave y'all a lot to think about, didn't we?
Certainly.
Was it this, kind of this similar story for the Public Services property? Todd, you still, are you storing stuff there still, too?
A couple pieces.
Yeah.
So let me try to help that out a little bit. Where we are now, here, we have 95% of our items. We filled up 80% of the storage, you know, capacity at the new place. We're thankful for it, we're glad for it, we love it, and it's got a bright future there. We still need to keep stuff over on the south side of the tracks because it is so far for backhoe travel, cemetery service, opening, closing graves. You all know that we used to ride lawnmowers everywhere. We're a lot further away from downtown now. So that's going to get, with the increase in traffic, that's more dangerous for us. We're probably going to store a couple lawnmowers on the south side to maintain the south streets. That kind of hub there is very much still needed. In my opinion, I know this don't matter much, but I'm a farmer also, part-time. And valuable land that hooks to you is twice as valuable as to you as it is to anybody else. And the Brevard Street location hooks to the park. And we own it free and clear now. So that's, these, these properties are tokens in your bank account and they will always be growing. So just think through that kind of stuff, if that helps.
It actually helps a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
We're actually still on time, so.
Thank you, thank you.
To the last item, which is planning and zoning. And they have been cut by Thursday, so their presentation should not take a complete hour off.
Are we doing a break? Do we have to do a break? Yeah, all right. We're going to go ahead and break for a minute. So coming back at 3:15. Thank you, 3:15, see y'all.
Yep, just waiting for my presentation to get larger and in presenter mode. So, good evening. I am Madison Miller, Assistant Planning Director for your planning department, and wanted to thank you all for your time commitment today and tomorrow. And then some of you I saw yesterday, and you had your board meeting Tuesday, so it's a busy week for all of us. So I want to appreciate your time. So upon our adoption of our land development code in 2021, we like to conduct an annual review of our text amendments and then development submittals that we have received. So we'll look at all those. We'll look at some lessons learned, and then what's next? So, development requests by the number. So on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see annexations that were approved and then rezonings that were approved. For the annexation portion, we had 168.7 acres added to our township in 2024. So if you're familiar with the Trails End property, that is a big annexation there that is incorporated into our town at the beginning of 2024. And then for the rezoning, we had 298.8 acres rezoned in the town of Waxall. So that includes the initial zoning of Trails End. It includes the rezoning of Emerson Park, the recent atrium Waxall development, and then a few smaller rezonings such as the one at Arbor Drive and Old Providence, and then the Waxall Equipment Rental rezoning. And so you can see based off those rezonings, 77% is intended for residential, while 22% is intended for commercial. And then of all those rezonings, the expected outcome is a little over 1,100 units, residential units. So that again includes Atrium, Emerson, potentially Trails End into that number for 2024. And so it seems like 2024 was a busy year for us, and a lot of projects that were approved, even under the old UDO, and then in 2020 and 2021, all these projects started to come online. So you saw Old Town Village and Blythe Mill Town Homes. They technically started construction in 2023, but it's so recent and the construction continued through 2024, I included those here. So you have Blythe Mill Town Homes and Old Town Village along the North Providence Street and Blythe Mill area, and then you have Villages of Waxall on Waxall Marvin Road, and then the Preserve Phase One. All these projects have started to come online where they've started to do site work. And in addition, and to our surprise, we had more commercial developments starting over residential this year. Madison Park with the self-storage next to the Harris Teeter. You have the Chase Bank, which is starting construction. And then Prescott Village, you are seeing some activity. You're seeing the Low Shopping Center site work starting, and then the parcel next to the Bed and Bark, they have gone vertical and have already been issued a temporary CO. And if you drive behind Ada Adella's on the edge of downtown, you'll see Rehoboth Road Flex Base has started their site work. And so a big trend we've been seeing is the interest in number of COs and then housing starts. So for 2024, we issued 16 COs along with 42 housing permits issued. So of those 42 housing units that have started, about half of that is from the Preserve and then the Old Town Village Development, specifically six for the Preserve and 27 for Old Town Village. So development request comparison, we have seen a lot more major subdivisions this year. So think of your Yarborough, your Prescott, and then also the South Point Trails End. The first submittal came in, but we haven't heard anything from them since October-ish. We had three conditional zoning requests and then six general rezoning or initial zoning requests. We had two annexations. One was withdrawn. We have four commercial developments that came in this year. That includes the Chase Bank, the Madison Park Out parcel two, where there's going to be a Caribou Coffee. And then we had a Primrose Daycare Facility on Cuthbertson Road. And then finally, a project called Ruby at Providence, which is near Alma Boulevard and Red Oaks Trail. They had their first submittal come in. So text amendments started at kind of the earlier phase of 2024. We started with the parkland and fee-in lieu. This was just an adjustment to ensure that that payment when it is received is based off the fair market value when that payment is due. Our downtown signage requirements, I remember having some good discussion with you guys on that. So that's where we updated our illumination standards for downtown. So wall signs are only allowed to be illuminated externally, and then blade signs were updated to be illuminated externally as well. And then we focus on vaping. So this is where we added definitions for smoke and tobacco shops, and then we established that distance requirement you see there. So that's 1,000 feet from additional smoke and tobacco retailers, and then 1,000 feet from schools and public parks. And then we had our school and public facilities text amendment. This is establishing a requirement to make sure that reservation of land for schools and public facilities is negotiated. So we'll do the notification process to the Union County Public Schools, or if there's a public facility proposed in that area on a plan, we'll make sure that agency gets that, and then they can start working on the purchasing of that development or of that land for future facilities. So parkland fee-in lieu, part two. So we have been seeing an influx of multifamily development requests. So we wanted to make sure that we were getting parkland dedication for that along with potentially a fee-in lieu. So we added a 1/35th of an acre for each unit. And then we also updated our single-family attached and detached equation, so it was updated to 1/30th of an acre. And then I would say our two biggest accomplishments of working with you guys and our planning board was the establishment of the R2 zoning district. So we added a whole new cheat sheet. We updated every parameter as we added this new zoning district in our land development code. And then again, the most exciting for us as staff was the conservation development design standards. So we wanted to offer a different design criteria for subdivisions, something other than the conventional subdivision you see throughout most of North Carolina. And so with that, we removed the clustering provision where for R3, you got an additional half a unit per acre if you conserve more open space, and then an additional unit per acre for the R4 zoning district. So developments this year, I will say most of what we learn is through either conditional zoning phase or during the construction document phase. One of the big things we learned was after the fact. So as land is developed, it seems that the land is becoming more challenging to develop. And so due to this, we are seeing plans denote retaining walls, and of course, they state retaining walls by others. So by the time we get those retaining wall plans by others, construction documents are approved, and we're seeing a lot of revisions needed to construction documents. And so we are looking at instituting a greater requirement for these retaining walls, and the Preserve is a perfect example of this. You can see here is a snip of a stream crossing, and of course, on a horizontal plan set, seeing a retaining wall doesn't appear to be very large, but this was a 50-foot retaining wall that had GeoGrid overlapping through the center of our right-of-way. Essentially, the town would be responsible for the future maintenance of this right-of-way and retaining wall, which would have conflicts with utilities, with street trees, with maintenance. And so we had to work with them to push that retaining wall outside of our right-of-way. Again, as land's getting to be more challenging, developers are finding other ways to fit these retaining walls within their development. So what we're looking at is requiring retaining wall designs be submitted during the construction document phase so we can catch it at the very beginning, so we're not having to do amendments to approved plans. We're also looking at doing height restrictions, because at the end of the day, the retaining wall is going to have to be maintained by the H.O.A., and that is a substantial cost to be burdened by them when that wall has the potential to fail within 50 years. We're also looking at ensuring that there's a separation of walls and the GeoGrid from them, from public right-aways, from tree save areas, and common open space areas. It's hard to build a retaining wall and then plant trees on top of it for a buffer, because over time, those large return trees like to get large, and they will not have great integrity of the wall after the fact. One project that you guys probably remember from last year, after many discussions with the developer, it was made clear that our 2023 PED plan was not specific in requiring paved trails. It left it open to being paved or a natural surface. So we want to make sure that it is clear that these trails are to be paved, and they are to meet our town's standards. So now, as part of the Yarborough development, the town will now be responsible for maintaining of a 10-foot wide surface trail, which is much more costly. And so we want to make it clear to developers that when these trails are provided, that they meet our standards, and then our PED plan, if it calls for a greenway, it should be up to our standards for maintenance. And then finally, development review. What's next? And I think, for now, I think we're just going to have to work with our town attorney when reviewing land development code changes moving forward to ensure it's not considered downzoning based off of a certain legislation. So we want to focus our efforts on text changes that are not considered downzoning based of what we know from the School of Government and the perspective of our town attorney. And some of the things that we can do, we can ensure that if a heritage tree is removed based off of site needs, that there's a fee-in lieu. This is something common that the city of Charlotte does. They've built a fund of money that they can go in and replant trees throughout the community. Also with the requiring retaining wall plans with CDs, that's something that I think we can do either in the engineering manual or within our land development code, which would not be a restriction. And then also the reforestation of slopes. I think that's something easy we can do because it's being developed, and make sure that that area is reforested to where in 10 to 20 years is back to a natural state. End discussion. I have this on here just to leave it open in it if there's anything that the board as a whole wants to focus on, or if there's any things that you guys have seen that we should add to our land development code. I know I've already had one conversation today about potential design standards for residential homes that are in the downtown when they're converted to commercial. Make sure that they retain a certain feel and a charm. But I wanted to leave it open to you guys if you have anything that's...
Yeah. Do we know the impact of SP 382 on any of the existing LDC items that were added last year?
Yeah, so that was a question that we had received. So as a part of the current Senate bill, the school and public facilities text amendment would go away, and is now null and void. And then the parkland fee-in lieu for the multifamily units would go away. So with that, we talked with Cindy. We would get rid of the parkland dedication, but for now, we have retained the fee-in lieu because that's not a taking of land. That's just a fund that we can use for future park space somewhere else. And then the big one, yep, the final one would be the cluster provision. So that half unit for R3 and then one unit for R4 would be coming back or is back. And so we have updated our land development code to reflect this because that, again, that Senate bill was retroactive to June 14th of 2024.
So the park fee-in lieu means that we're no longer able to get open space. We now just get the money. There's no ability to demand for open space rather than the funding.
Correct. Yep, yep, because that additional land, based on what we perceive for the Senate bill, would be a density reduction. And so we're learning on the fly, and I'll say we're making the best of it. And we, again, just appreciate all of you guys' support.
Can you explain the cluster one again? I'm confused, because that wasn't technically taking land away, right? It was just...
You'd be minimizing the density.
Yeah, so essentially, we would allow a density bonus if they preserve 20% open space. And so now that we remove that provision to allow greater density, that would be considered a downzoning. So essentially, in R4, if you're developing, if you save 20% open space, you could do five units per acre. But when we removed it, we made it to where you could only do four units per acre. So since they would be losing one unit per acre, that would be considered a downzone.
And is there any other concerns in any, you know, potential uses that would change density in any employment center or anything like that, anything? I know it's new, so I don't know if there's any red flags yet, or you just have to come across it?
No, no, not at this time. I think, and I say this, I think we're truly blessed to have adopted our land development code in 2021. There are jurisdictions who have adopted ordinances within the last six months who are now having to backtrack completely. Luckily, we're not affected too extremely. We have a lot of ordinances, and our land development code is already in place. So I think we're at a good standing point. We just have to be cautious of future text amendments for the time being.
Because it's currently the understanding that just changing setbacks would be prohibited as a result of this SP 382, correct?
That's correct.
So we couldn't increase setbacks to keep the higher-density development a little further away from the lower-density...
Not at this time.
Yeah.
So I address, I posed a question to Madison earlier today. Most of our land, is it not R1 or Employment Center? And if they wanted to change the zoning, couldn't we keep the zoning requirements the same for people that are trying to change to that zoning, yet we're not implementing requirements on old zoning? That's R1, but we're, or R4, but we're creating that challenge on somebody who's turning it to R4. So we have to have the old zoning and a new zoning.
Yeah, he's talking about we would pretty much create a split in our ordinance. So there would be the land development code for existing and current development, and then there'd be a land development code for all new proposals. And so we're not creating any non-conformities. We're not changing any uses for the existing. And so that would be one way that we could look at doing it.
Another way to move forward would be to further depend on conditional zoning, where you always have the landowner's consent.
Sounds like you guys have been reading the cuts.
We are trying. It's hard when your job changes at the flip of a bat, and you want to keep legal, and you're calling Cindy and trying to get the word out to you guys. And we lean on each other a lot. I'm really proud of him. He is a very smart young man that has worked very hard the past couple of months to keep his department moving. And I want everybody to hear that, because sometimes he doesn't believe it, but I'm very, very proud of him.
Thank you.
So thank you for your mid-year review.
Sorry for my face turning red, but... Of course. Each year, I have to throw in a picture, so I appreciate you noticing. Of course.
So if we were to do conditional zoning, we could, as a condition, then request more tree save?
Yes, if the landowner consents.
If the landowner consents, right.
But is the landowner open to not consent? Does 382 give them the ability to say, you know, "Go pound sand"?
Well, then you wouldn't put the conditional rezoning through. That'd be one of the conditions that you'd have.
My question is whether or not we think 382 would negate the ability to apply conditions at all?
No.
No, we don't believe that.
They are currently allowing conditional zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Part two of the planning show involves connectivity and access management. No, get up here. No, get up here.
I didn't want to be a distraction.
Oh, no, 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 no. So as a planner and in the planning world, I know a lot of folks don't really know what planners do. So I came armed today with some slides that just kind of teach you and to teach everyone around us and maybe even ourselves some things as we look at all of the different puzzle pieces that are... As we look at all of the different puzzle pieces that are Waxaw, how do we fit them together? How do we get a Waxaw Parkway to fit when we kind of already have these developments here and these developments here? How do we keep it safe so that nobody gets hurt? And how do we keep everybody happy? It's an adventure. So there's two tools in a planner's toolbox to help with this. The first one would be connectivity, and the second would be like a corridor overlay. Our LDC has a subject on connectivity. I would recommend future adding Parkway corridor when the Parkway comes more into existence. You currently have a commercial corridor, so this would be a separate fix. How do you fix not having connectivity? You kind of have to go back in and retrofit. Some of it you won't be able to fix. Some streets will never, ever connect. Some subdivisions will be one way in, one way out forever. But we might be able to go back in and look and see where do we have stubs, where we could safely move some land or move a barrier, and to be able to have some connectivity there. Corridor overlay would bring the ability to manage growth, driveway entrances, signage, setbacks. And connectivity helps you with emergency services, alleviating traffic, travel time. I really want to make sure that I can get a fire station to everybody's house. I want to make sure that everybody can get to you. If you need an ambulance, I need to be able to get them through our road network to be able to get them where they need to go. Sorry, this thing jumps.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's jumpy.
Yes.
Okay, so I will talk just a little bit about connectivity, hit the highlights. This is taken from our land development code, Section 7, which is streets, driveways, and parking. But I've isolated just a few passages from that chapter that are key to us understanding, particularly connectivity here. I included Section 7.1, the general street standards, because those are the standards that govern everything in this chapter. They are the standards by which we evaluate every plan that comes in, whether it's a conditional zoning or construction documents or whatever. And they are also the standards that you are charged to use in evaluation of these plans. We talk a lot about, when we see in plans, we talk about the rules of the ordinance and say, "Well, does this really meet the spirit of that ordinance?" Well, this section right here, Section 7.1, is the spirit of the ordinance here. It talks about the overall, these are the intentions. So I'm going to read through them really quickly. First of all, how streets are designed with these criteria. Provide streets in accordance with adopted plans. And we know that that might include, that would include the future land use plan, transportation plans, anything that's already been adopted. Provide for adequate vehicular access to all properties. That's obvious. We can't have any landlocked properties. But when we say adequate vehicular access, that might mean more than just one way to get there. Provide street connections to adjacent properties to ensure adequate traffic circulation within the area. So this is going to be all about providing those connections and what is adequate. Provide a local residential street system that disperses traffic to multiple points, encourages traffic calming, provides adequate access, particularly for fire, police, and other emergency vehicles. When you think about connectivity, that's got to rise to the top of the list. Is it, are we creating neighborhoods that can be reached quickly without the, you know, with alternative ways to get to emergencies? We know that's crucial, especially in, you know, rush hour, or just the fact that we have to deal with so much traffic. And part of what's there, too, is just dispersing that traffic. We want to make sure that not everybody has to get on the same road to head in one direction. There are alternative ways to get there. Provide a sufficient number of collector's streets. That's what I mean, is that you have more than one option to get across town. And balancing competing needs of pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular traffic through integrated streets and access management. This is not just about streets for cars. It's also about sidewalks. It's also about people getting around on greenways and such. So that's all part of connectivity. Now, the Section 7.2, this is the key of how do you get all this stuff done? So we'll just look at that real quickly. But the goals here are to connect neighborhoods to each other and local destinations such as schools, parks, and shopping. I know this comes up a lot when we're talking about pedestrian plans, because that's so destination-driven. Anytime there's a greenway put in, we evaluate it in terms of, well, what destinations can this neighborhood reach through this greenway? And that's what justifies certain pedestrian projects over others. Same is true, in a sense, with roads, but we think about it more precisely or more explicitly when we're talking about trails, because there seems to be more choice in where we can put in trails. So we want to emphasize these places that people can get to without having to get into their car. And that's another key to the traffic situation, giving people alternative ways to get to these important destinations. Maximize arterial capacity. This subject comes up all the time now because of the emphasis on the Parkway. That is arterial capacity to better serve regional long-distance travel needs. I know the number's been put out there a number of times of how much traffic that we see in Waxaw is generated from Waxaw residences and how much of it is through traffic. Well, we know through the outside studies that have been done that roughly 2/3 or more of the traffic that we're seeing is just through traffic. It's people trying to get basically mostly from South Carolina to Charlotte, and they're all coming through Waxaw, or so many of them are. And that's, so that's what's meant there, is having this arterial capacity for the through traffic. That's part of connectivity as well. Of course, I mentioned multimodal options. Indeed, provide multiple access routes for emergency and service vehicles. Again, the emphasis on that. And reduce vehicle miles travel and miles of travel and travel times for all users, and again, particularly for emergency vehicles. So, whoops, that is quick. Okay, so now just a real quick look at what is, what different, what connectivity looks like. Obviously, I've picked one town that has a very high connectivity, and you can see here, it's the classic street grid. High connectivity doesn't mean you have to have straight streets, rectilinear connections like that. But what it does mean is that you've got a lot of intersections, a lot of choices, a lot of connections, a lot of alternative routes. You know, if you could put, just imagine a point A and a point B there on the map on the left, and imagine all the different ways you could get from point A to point B. There are lots of options with a highly connected street grid. There's also street hierarchy. You can see that there's kind of a highway that goes through here that's a different hierarchy than those main streets, and that has limited access. There's going to be certain ways to get on there, and that's part of what's meant by street hierarchy, the number of access points. So compare that to Waxaw, and I do want to point out that these are different scale maps. The black-and-white one, where the streets are white, is a little more zoomed in, but not much. If you look at the Waxaw map, you can see grid in the downtown area. And that's true of so many American downtowns historically. They worked on a grid, and they worked very efficiently on a grid. A lot of times, it was easy to do, because those downtown areas were chosen because it was a lot of flat land, usually upland, where the opportunity to make straight streets in a grid was very simple. But as the town grows, as it fans out, oftentimes, there's more topography to deal with. So that is a challenge for high connectivity, is when you have a lot of creeks and such. Not insurmountable, but it does present a challenge. So when you look at the difference between these two circulation types, I'll put it that way, I want to just break down what the difference in connectivity is here. A lot of it has to do with block length. Now, we do have block-length ordinances for the different zoning districts, but historically, you know, that may not have been in place when some of this was built. And we certainly see communities now where they don't have the same limits, and so they might go a long way before you get from one intersection to the next. But that has everything to do with connectivity, is having short blocks, having a minimum of cul-de-sacs, a very minimum. One of the problems with connectivity today in so many towns like Waxaw is that just a few decades ago, everybody was just building communities that were just almost completely cul-de-sacs with one way in, one way out. It's still not uncommon, but fortunately, the tide has turned a little bit in the planning world for that. But so many towns suffer because there's so many cul-de-sacs. And these are essentially like private courts, where only, you know, the people who live on them, it's great, you know, they don't have traffic going through, but you've got, you know, those roads are being paid for by the general populace that doesn't get to benefit from those roads. So connectivity, just the way it's figured is in the connectivity ratio. It has to do with the number of those links, those blocks, and the number of intersections. It's the lengths divided by those intersections, and cul-de-sacs are included in that number to get a basic connectivity ratio. In our code, in the land development code, we have a certain connectivity ratio that has to be met for different districts. Another part of the subject, of course, is spacing the access points. That has to do, again, with the highways, and Ashley will be talking about that in a minute more. So it's a two-point problem. There's how do you direct new developments so that it's building according to connectivity that is going to work for the overall town? And then, of course, it's retrofitting. So we'll take a little closer look at that in this next slide. Yeah, I did just one slide per push. So this is a subsection of that Section 7.2 that more specifically deals with street connectivity. I've zeroed in on that same map. This is all on the MegaMap, so you can see it. And you can turn on the layer that shows these existing street stubs. So you see everywhere where you see that little gold circle with the car in it, that's where we have basically a dead end now. And I believe at all, it's supposed to be at every one of these intersections, or I'm sorry, these dead ends, there is a sign that says, "This is for a future connection." That's key for the whole issue of, that we face today, basically, where you might have a neighborhood that has one of these connections, and they have the expectation that it's always going to be a dead end. It's always going to be essentially a private court that they can enjoy and don't have to worry about anyone else using that road who doesn't live right there. So that is a challenge. That's a political challenge, and we see it all the time. It's all about setting expectations, however. And so we're doing what we can so far to at least have proper signage that shows this is to a future connection. But there's more that can be done, I'm sure, that could help set those expectations so that when somebody moves into one of these communities, they're on one of those streets, they expect that that is going to be a regular through street at some point. And the reason those are there is to, again, meet the requirements of this connectivity section, where you have these connections between developments. It says here, "All residential developments shall be required to connect to existing street stubs or provide stubs and rights of way to adjacent properties." Further, "Public right-of-way and access easements shall be dedicated to allow for future construction, connection of streets, sidewalks, from adjacent property." So that's critical for trying to improve our connectivity in the town. And ultimately, what it would look like is that there would be more ways to get around town, more options, particularly at rush hour, so that people who aren't going from South Carolina to Charlotte have a way to get around so that they don't have to get in the same traffic with everybody else. It's increasing those choices. So I think that's all to be said for the moment, but I know we'll recap some of this. So back to Ashley.
Thank you, Blair. Next up in the planner's toolbox is access management. And access management is the practice of actively controlling and managing how vehicles access roadways by regulating the number and location of connections to highways, major roads, for the purpose of improving traffic flow, safety, and efficiency on the transportation network. So my mind was kind of blown when I came to Waxaw, because most of your traffic doesn't really come from Waxaw. It kind of utilizes you to go through, and I'm sitting here, and I'm like, "Well, how do you even, how do you manage that? So I got to find a way on how to help move these folks around Waxaw to give you guys the ability to kind of piecemeal your way through town. How can I get these folks from South Carolina to Charlotte and not have to deal with y'all?" So my, I mean, the answer there is a Parkway. So how do we do a Parkway? A Parkway is not a street. It's a highway to move people around town. It'll have certain access points that are thoughtfully controlled, and with the planning and engineering departments working together, I have no doubt that they'll find the best interest in doing that. Your 2040 plan noted that all of your traffic was a real challenge, but all of it was not from local trips. So how do we fix that? I was looking up different research techniques on what we could do, and I was questioning whether we could do a zoning corridor overlay. This would superimpose an additional set of regulations that would enhance your small-town character, provide some districts and economic development, which might help with funding, because as Ms. Depper said, they look for things like that. Provides placemaking in public spaces, connectivity, also safety, crosswalks, amenities, parks, schools, getting access so that if one side of town has more park space or recreational than the other, I can move folks over there, and they're not struck in traffic trying to get there. Of course, we'd still keep our ordinances in landscaping and using a centralized urban public space. So the DOT establishes the authority to designate, to maintain, and regulate controlled access facilities as part of a state highway system. This is where it would be, we would get with our friends with engineering. There's median treatments that we could use to slow folks down. You've got two-way left-turn lanes to restrict direct left turns, improving traffic flow, driveway spacing, spacing them further apart, dedicated turn lanes, right in, right out. But one of my favorites is also a frontage road. Put one up here. I don't know why it says photo on right. Apparently, I was tired that night. It's photo on left. Sorry, my commute's really long. I live in Davidson. I'm a mess. But I want you guys to just think about a frontage road and see what opportunities that could provide Waxaw. A frontage road provides access to homes and businesses, which would be otherwise cut off. It uses minor on- and off-ramps, so that you don't have people going 55 miles an hour, and then, "Oh, I got to get to Wendy's," slams on the brakes and turns right. We get them off at a different location where the drivers interpret that someone, they're going to be slowing down because there's an access point there. So if you imagine a busy highway running through a developed area with businesses and homes, a frontage road would run parallel to the highway and would designate points to eliminate merging with the high-speed traffic. So in summary, connectivity is important for safety, emergency services, and to have shorter block lengths, which slows people down, because they can't, if they have to stop at a stop sign or go around a curve, they can't floor it for half a mile, and to allow safe routes to school and recreation. And access management utilizes access spacing driveway, spacing state turn lanes, median treatments, and right-of-way management to help the operation of road systems. And managing access is known to increase roadway capacity, reduce crashes, and shorten time for motorists. And then if you guys have any discussion on our planning crash course, we're all ears. If there's anything that you would like planning to think about, any direction, I'd love to hear it.
We had some discussion during the atrium development, you know, about revisiting connectivity ordinances, because every time, you know, people don't want the connectivity, and then there's a lot of people upset about it. So did you guys have any thoughts on what we should do?
I think it goes both ways. I mean, yeah, it depends on the expectations. I mean, it's, it really sucks to live somewhere for like 10 years, and you see that sign, and you don't think anything of it, and then boom, someday, somebody's trying to access it. But I also see where, maybe two years from now, your son needs help, or your house catches on fire, and how can I get the fire truck to you if you have one way in and one way out of your subdivision, and it takes 20 minutes for them to get there? So I see both flips to the coin. I see it as a blessing and a curse. How you guys choose to proceed forward with that is all y'all. However your vision is to going forward for each and every single one of you will matter, because once you have a one-way in, a way out, and one-way in subdivision, I can't connect to it.
So you don't see...
Once it's closed, it's kind of closed. Now, if there's a stub there that would allow future connection, we'd be able to go back in and retrofit some.
Okay, so you don't see any improvements that should be made to the connectivity ordinances to sort of help with this recurring situation?
I haven't had a chance to research it. I started in November, and I've slowly worked my way through the ordinance, and it's definitely something that we should absolutely look at, especially since the public, we want to listen to the public as much as possible. I'd also like to talk with Dex and Kevin and Fire, just to hear their voices, too, because I think they matter as well. Maybe that's a meeting we could set up in the future, and just try to sit down and discuss it, and get everybody's viewpoint, and kind of go from there.
Is there any way, I guess, to inform potential homebuyers that are up against a stub? That that's possible? Because the assumption is people know.
Right.
And if you're a first-time homebuyer, with everything else you're learning on the fly, you're not thinking that.
Well, my argument would be that their realtor should probably tell them.
Well...
But, I, yeah, no, I understand. I mean, we, the town does a very good job of putting a sign up that says, "Hey, this is for future connectivity. This isn't going to be a dead end forever."
Right, but I don't know if there's anything...
The HOA also has responsibility, and I forget what the percentage is in Waxaw, but most of your neighborhoods are HOAs, specifically new ones. So I would put some of that responsibility on them as well. But also, the developer, when they bring plans in, it's shown on there as, "This is a stub for future connectivity."
Yeah, I'm just trying, you know, think about how to...
Right, how to mainstream...
...inform the uninformed, I guess, or because...
Well, I figured we could just start by talking about it, and maybe they could think about it, and we could all just talk together and see what we can come up with. Because, yeah, I'd love to have a bunch of basketball hoops at the end of the street, but I also, if your house catches on fire, I need to find a way to get there.
Yeah, I kind of think that if they know in advance, somehow, then they can...
They should.
What, they should, but they...
It's, I mean, like, when you go to buy a house, say, Ryan Holmes, for instance, puts up a plan. When you go to pick your lot, it shows you the streets, like, it shows you everything. And there'll be a stub, and it won't be a cul-de-sac. you everything, and there'll be a stub, and it won't be a cul-de-sac. So I guess what I would educate the public in, if there's not a bulb, it's going through.
Right, and I think that that's where a miscommunication can happen, because I know from moving to a new area, you know, I lived in an area in New York with a grid. You know, it was very easy to figure out. But when you're coming to an area, and you have all these, this beautiful shiny home, and they're showing you the model, and they're selling you the lot, and then you got a premium fee, and then, oh, look, you got a trail...
But when you are seven cars out, trying to, somebody's making a left, and you only have one way in and one way out of your subdivision...
Tell me about it.
You might call me and be thankful. So, but you could be mad at me on Tuesday, but Friday, you might love it.
Right, but I'm just saying, I guess, the informed...
Right.
They're just not as informed as we may assume, even with a map, even with...
So we have, he has on the MegaMap, you have that picture that you guys saw with all the stubs is on there. I don't know who would be weird enough to go look at it, but I'm...
Could be a comms issue.
We could, yeah. We could work on a way for future developments to, on that map, to show future developments, kind of put the circle that he has on there, and, because you have his little layer right now, and...
Yeah, but that, I mean, that does require somebody going online and looking at a map that they may not even know about. And so, yeah, that's just one small piece.
I mean, do you have any advice on anything that we could research to consider?
I've been trying to think about that, and, you know, it's hard to project the buyer that's coming, right? And how informed or uninformed they are. So, you know, wondering if you guys had ever seen anything? I mean, that's not an easy solution. I think it's just...
There could also be additional signage in the community where you have the dead end, and that's got a sign there, but maybe the street sign at the closest intersection would say future whatever.
I guess this would be a question for my planning crew. At what point do they put the sign up on the street? Madison, I don't know if you'd be able to answer that, but that might be something that we could change that would be easy.
Easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with this issue becoming more prominent, with these stubs being proposed for future connection, for these new developments that are coming online, we ensure the detail and that spec is on the site plan, and we make sure everyone is aware that this street is coming, and it's about education. You know, we can be retroactive and put those signs in these old neighborhoods where they may not have one, but we're trying to be more proactive with the new development to make sure that before we accept that street, that sign is there, it's alerted, everyone knows about it. And then every time a realtor or a real estate professional contacts us, they ask us about road improvements. We're like, oh, well, there's a stub here, so if your property next to you develops, we're going to ask for that connection. So we're doing it at our level, and it could be something that we broadcast more publicly...
Well, we could just ask, we could ask that when the street is built, when the infrastructure is, and when they put their model home up, that you put up a sign then rather than after the homes have sold.
Right, and that's a good idea.
Now, if they're buying in the on-site or something, I can't, that doesn't help.
Yeah, because...
For anybody that's here and looking, I think that it's a pretty eye-opening. There's a sign there. I mean, your expectation is probably pretty valid.
So this is something we talked about at the Safety Task Force last night. We talked about connectivity, and I think that it is an issue also that people just aren't, are not necessarily thinking forward.
Right.
Now, I mean, I thought one of the biggest mistakes, the neighborhood next to, on the Adelina project, how they didn't want, I think they are going to regret that decision, especially when the construction starts on Providence Road, because they're going to have no other way to get out.
Right, there's no way to get out.
And so I think we're going to have to just stick to our guns on this connectivity.
Right. I can't fix it all, but I can make it easier going forward, because I want you guys to be thinking, I mean, you're going to blink, and it's going to be 2030. You're going to blink, and it's going to be 2040, and I have no idea what Waxaw looks then. However, I know that you're still going to have to get from A to B, and however, I can help make that a reality, would be my plan.
And so, one quick thing before you step in, Ryan. So I know when Jeff was here, I know this was a topic that came up for atrium specifically, and we were just going to get general direction on if we retain our connectivity, if we strengthen our connectivity, or if we reduce our connectivity ordinance.
Or if you just leave it as it is.
And so what would the general direction of our board be right now?
I want to leave it because I think that that is one thing that's going to help with traffic movement. I mean, anytime there's an accident, you've got to, you're getting on ways, trying to figure out what's another route you can go, right? I mean, you have to have other ways to go.
I'm worried about school buses pulling out. So in the morning, when I come up, I work here from 9:00 to 4:00, and I sit in a lot of traffic, and I see these school buses play chicken, and it scares the heck out of me, and they can't clear these turns, but they've also been sitting there for 15 minutes trying to get a left to get the kids in school in time. And I would just ask that our residents be mindful and be thinking of that, of, yeah, I know that you don't want folks driving, like, you don't want extra traffic driving through your neighborhood, but perhaps it's not those folks driving through your neighborhood. Perhaps it's the school bus lady dropping your son off in the afternoon or trying to get him to school in time. And I just want to make sure that we show both sides of the coin on that aspect, and that we are thinking of the future and not just today, because right now, we're kind of catching up, and then we're figuring out how do we go from here? And that's kind of the direction we were looking from, you guys.
I want to mention one other thing, too. We've been talking about residential, but there are also, our connectivity rules also apply to commercial, and that's very important when you have commercial development on either side of, in our case, maybe Highway 16, that those connections are made from one commercial establishment to another through the parking. We're pretty good at making those connections happen. Doesn't happen 100% of the time, and it needs to. We need to take advantage of all our commercial properties to help with that, too. So, I don't know.
Well, thank you, Tracy, because I wrote the ordinance a few years back, so keeping it's kind of something I'd like. But I think the problem, I guess, would be what you're saying, is those signs need to go up. Right now, they're a part of the requirement for the closeout, and they need to go up when that first layer of asphalt's down.
Faster, yeah, faster.
And so that, I think that would be a key to helping with the problem. To Blair's point, there's also connectivity requirements for pedestrians. So you might have a, I don't remember the code exactly, but it might be like 1,000 feet for vehicles cross-section for commercial, but it's 100 or 200 feet for pedestrians. Every time there's, if the depth of a development is a certain length, there's a pedestrian requirement for a segment in there as well, so that each, for the new Madison Park could be a good example, there's a connection in there for the Harris Teeter, pedestrian requirement for the connections to happen.
Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, short summary. As I mentioned earlier this morning, by the end of tomorrow, I would like you to have on a piece of paper, seven things that you feel are important that you would like for the staff to help you move forward with. On the right-hand side of the page, you can put 50 things you don't want us to work on or you don't like, but those seven, we would like on that left-hand side of the paper. Let's see, several years ago, when I retired, Tom, I ran for the board in Farval. Tom, and I actually got elected, and it was the worst four years of my life. I'd do a lot better, Tom, on this side of the table than I did on that side of the table. Tom, and I do want to say, Tom, I know all of y'all have jobs, you've got things to do. Thank you for, you know, for the time. I know you're going to pay for it dearly because you've got to catch up on your work and do some other thing, but it is important for the staff to have the opportunity to work where you, Tom, in a more detailed setting, where you're not concerned about, you know, short agendas, Tom, it helps them. But, Tom, I think it ultimately helps you, and I do really thank you for this time and effort. I mean, I know it's hard. I've been on that side, so, you know, thank you again. And one more final statement. I want you to look at these faces out here. I'm here because several of your key staff members jumped ship. Tom, they're gone. These people stayed. They are your team. They're here for you. They're here to help you, Tom, and they will. So, Tom, I'd like them to, give them a big hand. They are good. I can tell you, I've worked with a lot of staff. These people know where they're going, Tom, and they're good, so.
And we appreciate you. We do.
And that's all we have for today. We are scheduled again for 8:00 in the morning, so, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We have a long list of, I think, things to consider and things to think through and talk through, I think, working out some of the details with y'all, and then kind of figuring that out as a group ourselves. It was a long list of projects, and it was a long list of staff requests. So as a representative of the people, I was toiling over a question and whether or not I should ask the question, but the question to staff is, what is your vision slash expectation for the tax rate and tax burden of the people of Waxaw? Because I know that anybody who's watching this online right now, or who picks up the video in the next month or two, is going to be freaking out because that was a long list, not only just in staff increases, but in project increases. So I just want to throw that out to you guys. I know you're working hard. I know you do great work, and you're all dedicated, and I've spoken with a lot of you individually, one-on-one, and I can see the passion in your eyes. I can see the dedication and the work that you do, your sincerity, your desire to do a good job. I think all of that is huge, and that's, I think, why you're such a great team and why Waxaw is doing so well. So, but I just want to, as a representative of the people, I just wanted to throw that out there and have you guys thinking about that so that you let folks know as well that you are also mindful of the taxpayer dollars and getting maximum value. So I just wanted to kind of close with that and make sure we're all being mindful of who's keeping the lights on. So thank you. And of course, and since we are all here, we, as in the Board of Commissioners, I would like to invite a motion to go into closed session pursuant to...
Motion to go? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, you jumped all over me for not inviting everybody.
I was ready. I was ready. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm all about getting this done quickly, but I don't want to get back in there and have to come back anyway. So pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6, to discuss personnel matters, in this closed session, I'd like to invite the entirety of the commission. I'd like to invite our head of HR, our town clerk, and our interim town manager. Am I missing anybody?
Motion to go on to closed session.
I had a question. Am I missing anybody?
No bodies. Still moved.
All in favor.
Hi.
We are now in closed session.